I think I missed the little, the little thing. Call to order the Planning Commission for July 28, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Calley?
Here.
Commissioner Onstott?
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Here.
Commissioner Kessley?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Now is the time for public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll have the approval of the June 23, 2016 minutes.
Move for approval.
Second. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Right here. Please vote. Thank you. The next item has been continued to date uncertain, so we will go to Item 7 on the Agenda, PL 15-0060, Marata Petroleum Company applicant. Good morning.
Good morning. Can we have the PowerPoint? Good morning, Chair Duquesne, Commissioners, Christina Borero, of Planning Staff. Before you today is a request by the applicant, Marata Petroleum, to, for your commission to grant the CUP to, for the Marata Nesbit Oil and Gas Facilities and consider an appeal that was submitted by SeaFrog, the Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas, regarding the Planner and Director's approval of this permit. So, the permit before you today is a modification of LU 11-0041 that was granted by your commission back in May of 2013, and this is the site plan that was approved. Right here is the Nesbit site with the three wells that are of discussion today. The project site is located in, between the cities, or in the areas of Ojai and Santa Paula, near Konigstein Road and Highway 150. And this is the project site, noting the Nesbit lease drill site and the Hearth, the Hearth Drill Site. The zoning and land use for the project site, project site is here in black and white, surrounding the parcels. The project site has a land use designation for the general plan of open space and a zoning designation of open space, 160 acres, minimum lot size. And the size of the drill pad is about one acre total. Surrounding development is predominantly open space and agricultural exclusive zoning. The project site is not in the Ojai Valley Area Plan jurisdictional boundary. That is denoted by the purple line here. It's just outside of that boundary. See the Nesbit lease over here. So, none of the Ojai Valley Area Plan policies were analyzed with this project. So, surrounding development for the site, like I said, it was, surrounding development is predominantly open space and agricultural zoning, and there's also a zoning designation of rural exclusive five acres. And then, there's also an SRP designation, which is about right here. So, to...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you explain what SRP stands for?
SRP is Scenic Resource Protection Overlay Zone.
Thank you.
So, the project site is 6,700 feet south of the, sorry, one Highway 150 is 6,700 feet south of the project site. Konigstein Road is about 5,500 feet from the project site. Thomas Aquinas College is about one mile from the project site east, and there's open space and low density residential development surrounding the area. So, what is before you today? Well, it's a reactivation of the Nesbit lease oil and gas facilities, specifically that is, currently, there's three idled wells on the property, and the applicant is requesting those wells to be reactivated. And the expiration date for this project will continue to be till April 2038. There's no vegetation removal, and there's no expansion of the disturbed area where the drill site is located. And also, the applicants are requesting to use Konigstein Road to access State Highway 150. And the maximum truck loads of produced fluid per week, Monday through Friday, is one. And per the conditions of approval, I believe it's Condition 59, actually, it's Condition 1 of the permit, does not allow Saturday trucking. So, this is the proposed hauling route. The yellow or gold lines is the proposed trucking route from the Marata Nesbit production site all the way down to State Highway 150. And the existing route is from the Nesbit Drill Site to, down Konigstein Road, and it cuts, it does cut across from south of the Marata Agnew site that your, that your Planning Commission heard in April of this year. And it goes across, it goes across Sisar Creek and along the old Ojai Oil Road that was washed out by flooding in, around 1995. So, this is just a site, a site plan and...
Excuse me, Christina, can you go back a slide? Go back to a point where it enters, where it, where's Konigstein Road?
Konigstein Road is this, here.
Okay. And at the creek there, I assume is where the bridge is at, right there?
The Konigstein Road is here.
And 150 right there?
Yeah, the bridge is right here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, this is an aerial and a site plan, just to show you where the proposed reactivation of the wells is located. This is the access road to the, to the drill site and the wells and all the equipment. So, to understand the site, here's some site photos. The one on my left is looking toward Konigstein Road and Highway 150. These are the two existing drill rigs. And the one to my right is looking west at the Nesbit Drill Site, which is around here. And this is the existing Nesbit Drill Site area looking toward Highway 150, from a different angle. So, the permit has gone through several modifications, starting in 1972, and the most recent one in May of 2013. And they do include the Marata Nesbit Site and the Hearth Site. And so, with the Nesbit Site, which is the, which is the request before you today, there are six wells that were approved, and three are existing. So, staff conducted environmental review of the project pursuant to SEQA, and staff evaluated the project and determined that a subsequent EIR was the appropriate environmental document for this project. And that is because the Phoenix West 1983 EIR, that was before your Board in April and is associated with the Marata Agnew Project that is down the road, and also owned by Marata Petroleum. The EIR stated that there could be, I want to actually redo the direct quote. From the EIR, it's on page 23, and it says that "The movement of large vehicles at the intersection of Konigstein Road and Highway 150 could create unsafe conditions." So, with that, with that statement and the findings in that EIR, a subsequent EIR was prepared today. So, in September of 2015, staff prepared a notice of preparation describing the proposed project. And on October 7th of 2015, staff conducted a scoping meeting for the EIR, where, where the public would, would come to the meeting and provide commentary on what should be included in that document. And from December 7th to January 21st of this year, the draft EIR was sent out for public review, and the EIR was circulated to state and federal agencies and the public for comment. So, from that, we received several comments on the project from the EIR and throughout the whole processing of the permit request. So, we, staff received seven letters from, regarding comment on the draft EIR, or subsequent EIR, and that's Appendix L of Exhibit 4, which is the SEIR, and letters and testimony provided at the May 17 Planning Director hearing. That's included in Exhibit 11B of your staff report, and subsequent correspondence, which is the grounds of appeal that I'll be discussing in a moment. And the commentary just, really just went around two themes, was the disagreement, the public's disagreement with the evaluation of Konigstein Road and the SR 150 intersection regarding traffic safety of that intersection, and concerns about the air quality analysis that was done. So, with the environmental review, the subsequent EIR concluded that there was no potentially significant or significant unavoidable impacts, Class 2 and Class 1. And so, the issue areas, some of the issue areas of note were air quality, biology, noise, and traffic and circulation, and all of these, the analysis of all of these in the subsequent EIR stated that it was less than significant impacts resulting from the proposed project. So, on May 19th, the Planning Director approved the proposed project before you, and subsequently after that, Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas, which I'll refer to as SeaFrog, submitted an appeal to your commission. So, their issue areas, again, had some general themes, and they were segmentation of the SEQA review, traffic safety, and air quality. And basically, that the staff did not evaluate the project, the entire project, in accordance with SEQA, the traffic safety issue that I previously explained, and the air quality issue as well. So, with the appeal, SeaFrog provided five grounds of appeal. For brevity, I'll just go over the general theme of the appeal and staff responses. So, for Appeal Ground 1, SeaFrog contends that the SEIR improperly segments the environmental review, and then we didn't, and staff did not evaluate the entirety of the project. However, the entire project is just comprised of the reactivation of the Nesbit lease facilities and the use of Konigstein Road to access State Route 150. There's no changes in operations on the Hearth lease, and the environmental review is conducted, was conducted in accordance with the SEQA guidelines. So, SEQA requires, requires the local jurisdiction to evaluate impacts based on a SEQA baseline, and the baseline for this project is zero truck trips and zero air quality emissions. And that's because, that's derived from the physical conditions on the Nesbit production site, which is zero because the wells were idled in 2013. Grounds of appeal, of appeal 2 and 3 regard, are regarding tanker truck traffic and the health and safety of that intersection. So, in Appeal Ground 2, SeaFrog contends that the oil tanker truck use at that intersection is dangerous condition and poses an unacceptable risk to the health and safety of the community. And Appeal Ground 3 is the tanker truck use at that intersection is not supported by substantial evidence. So, staff contends that this ground of appeal, these two grounds of appeal are without merit because to determine the impacts regarding traffic safety, there has to be empirical evidence, there has to be data to support the conclusions. So, the data is that there's no accidents involving tanker trucks reported in the last 20 years, and that data was provided by Caltrans, who, who has meticulous records on accidents on all, on all state highways. And this includes a 12-year period from 2002 to 2013. Also, with the Caltrans records, we found that, staff found that the oil tanker trucks and all, from all operations on Konigstein Road, they churned about 200, between 2,000, 200, 2,746 and 4,942 times with no incident. And for the Nesbit site, the project traffic volume is negligible because that lease will have a maximum of 0.29 one-way trips per day. And the County Transportation Department also reviewed the project several times and found that there's no significant traffic safety hazard. And also, Caltrans reviewed the project, and in their 9/28/2015 letter, they specified that they did not identify any impacts on the state route. And also, the site incidents at that intersection...
Excuse me, Christina?
Yes.
On that Caltrans letter, September 28th? Did it specifically mention Konigstein Road and 150, or it just generally mentioned traffic on 150?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, the letter just says that we don't anticipate any effects on state highway or state facilities. That's what it says. It's, it's in your staff report, and we can get you the exact language in the paper.
Yeah, I recall reading something, but I also recall reading that there was a prior letter from Caltrans also in, in 2015, I think several months earlier.
Yes.
Where specifically spoke about Konigstein and 150 and their concerns about safety and signage there. Am I correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, you are correct, and in between that letter and the letter regarding this specific project, we sent a letter to them explaining our analysis, and, and thus, the second letter is the one specifically applies to this, and they did not identify those issues that they were clearly aware of, and we coordinated with Caltrans, and we have spoken with them since. So, the, the answer is that Caltrans hasn't identified any significant traffic safety hazard on State 150 at that intersection.
Based on input from the county?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, with regard to Appeal Grounds 2 and 3, project-related truck traffic will not constitute a significant impact on traffic safety. So, as I mentioned earlier, staff of the Planning Division and the County Transportation Department conducted a site visit and to determine the site distance for two, two locations, Konigstein Road and 150, which is the intersection that is associated with the proposed project, and the Ojai Oil Company Road and the SR 150 intersection, which was included in the Phoenix West EIR, and that's related to the Marata Agnew Project, and that was the original route, but that route has since washed out. So, in, in this investigation of the site visit, staff determined that the site distance was, exceeds the minimum requirements for site distance at the Konigstein Road 150 intersection, but it does not, it does not meet the requirements for the Ojai Oil Road intersection, looking west. And Commissioner, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, this is the exact quote from the Caltrans letter from 9/28/15 regarding the proposed project. And it states that "Caltrans does not expect project approval to result in a direct adverse impact to the existing state transportation facilities."
Thank you, and that's based on a speed limit of 35 miles an hour? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, yes.
Thank you.
So, we all watched this video at the last Planning Commission hearing for the Marata Agnew Project, and this is a, just a video of the tanker truck, the articulated truck that will be used in the Marata Nesbit operations, and it's a, just depicts the left turn from that intersection. So, can you play the video? So, in 2016, the applicant provided the county with a new video of the truck turn from going right, and as you'll note in the video, that it does not cross, the tanker truck does not cross the double yellow line. So, can you... Can you try the video one more time? The 2016 video. Okay, you can stop the video. So, in their ground of appeal, SeaFrog contends that a traffic study by a licensed professional engineer must be prepared. So, the applicant submitted a traffic report prepared by Associated Traffic and Transportation Engineers in July of this year, and the report specifically evaluated that intersection of concern and concluded three things. They concluded that the operation of the intersection has not exhibited any safety issues over the past 20 years, and the intersection will continue to operate satisfactorily, and the proposed addition of less than three one-way tanker trucks per day will not alter this condition. So, County Transportation Department also reviewed this report and concurred with their conclusions. So, Appeal Grounds 4 and 5 are dealing with air quality, and SeaFrog contends that the air quality analysis is not supported by substantial evidence because it fails to evaluate all of the project emissions, and also that the air quality analysis magnifies the failure to include all of the project emissions by incorporating matters of mitigation with the Level of Significance section of the report. So, as we mentioned in the Marata Agnew Project that your commission heard in April of this year, and a nice presentation by the County Air Pollution Control District, there's a general plan policy that deals with air quality, with air quality emissions, and that's General Plan Policy 1222. And basically, that policy states that discretionary development must be evaluated with regard and by the Air Quality Assessment Guidelines, also known as AQAGs. So, AQAGs Section 5.1 states that the guidelines, which is the AQAGs, are not applicable to equipment or operations required to have an authority to construct or a permit to operate, which all oil and gas facilities are required to have, and moreover, the emissions from the equipment or operations is, are not counted towards the air quality significance thresholds. So, yes?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Onstott, I'm not sure what you mean by preemption.
Overriding, overrides the, the general...
No, the, well, let me explain the scheme there. We have an air quality permitting program.
Right.
And by the way, Mr. Thomas from the Air Pollution Control District is here if you have any direct questions for the district. But there is a permitting program, and the design of the permitting program is to mitigate emissions from APCD permitted equipment, permitted operations and equipment. In that program, smaller facilities don't have to do any direct mitigation, but larger facilities do, and they have to mitigate for more than their share of the emissions. That is, they provide an offset for the smaller facilities. And together as a program, that's how it's set up, and it's a ordinance designed and a general plan designed mitigation program for air quality. And as presented by the district to this commission and to the Board just recently, the, the program is working. And so, the, the scheme that has been developed, starting with general plan policy and sending us to the ISAGs, and which, which also, of course, include the Air Quality Assessment Guidelines, that, that scheme, we have followed exactly as mandated by the general plan policy. And that's actually not before you today, is, is whether or not that's a good idea. And so, the issue is, is there's a, a policy and a regulatory basis for mitigation that, that, that's how our ISAGs work, and our thresholds for air quality work. The, the portions of a project which do not require Air Pollution Control District permits and are not part of the air pollution program of the county, they are subject to the SEQA thresholds and such as truck traffic emissions and things that are not, like mobile sources, those are subject to the thresholds, and we do evaluate those and calculate those.
Thank you. Follow-up question, Mr. Vaca? Maybe you're not the appropriate person to answer this, but APCD's, as it relates to the county's air pollution mitigation program, does it meet the state standards, or is that something in progress to get to that level where the state's at?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, I, I think what you mean is, is the program working, and have they met their air pollution... And have they met their air pollution concentration goals set by the Environmental Protection Agency? Up to now, they have. They have certain milestones to meet, and they have met their milestones, and of course, the air standards are getting more stringent in the future, and they anticipate meeting those. And that was part of a presentation given to the board, and I believe given to your commission at the last hearing. So, the program is working, and in its totality, that's why we don't count APCD permitted emissions as part of thresholds of discretionary development, because we have a program and the program has been proven to work.
Thank you.
So, the thresholds of significance regarding air pollutants, which are reactive organic compounds and NOx, is five pounds per day, and the greenhouse gas emissions resulting with regard to climate change are 10,000 microtons of CO2 per year. But related to the project, the project emissions that are pursuant to the thresholds, which are in the AQAGs, the project will emit 0.02 pounds per day of criteria pollutants, that's the NOx, and only 1,196 microtons of CO2 per year. So, the project will be well below the thresholds. And again, the Marada Nesbit rock emissions specifically are four pounds per day, and that was calculated because there's two production wells, times two pounds per day of rock per well. And this is not counted towards the five pounds per day threshold. So, regarding this hearing, and all of the hearings, the planning director hearing for this project, as well as the scoping part with the environmental document, staff did notification in three ways. Staff mailed notification, did electronic notification, and there was a legal advertisement in this Ventura County star. So, as I mentioned, have mentioned several times before, your commission heard and granted the Marada Agnew project, which is just southwest of the project site of the Nesbit site, along Conningstein Road, and SeaFrog appealed this to the Board of Supervisors. And so, on June 21 of this year, the Board of Supervisors heard that project, and they granted the modified CEP for PL 13-0158, that's the Marada Agnew project that you heard in April, and they certified that EIR. So, the board specifically approved the drilling of three wells for that project, the redrilling of one well for that project, the use of Conningstein Road for access to 150, new signage on state Route 150, which was a concern of this commission, and has subsequently been added as a condition to this proposed project. It's Condition 59 on Exhibit 15. And trucking is limited to Monday through Friday, and that was also a concern of this commission in April, and that was included in Exhibit 15 of this project, I believe it's Condition 1. So, in summary, the issues that I've discussed today, the air quality emissions will be less than significant. Traffic safety, the traffic safety impacts will be less than significant for the proposed project. There is a maximum of one truckload of produced fluid per week for the Nesbit site. In the permitting process, the subsequent EIR was prepared in accordance with SEQA, and the project was evaluated in conformance with the general plan and the non-coastal zoning ordinance requirements. We did receive some late submittals. We have a SeaFrog letter from 7/21, that's Exhibit 16 of your staff report. A county response to that is dated 7/27/16. That's included in Exhibit 16B of your staff report. We also have a letter from John Davis, and a letter from SeaFrog. I'm not sure of the date of that letter, I think it was yesterday. And we also did receive another letter from SeaFrog. So, that concludes my presentation, and Mr. Baca does have some follow-up comments for you.
Thank you, Christina, and Madam Chair, members of the commission. Just to sort of summarize again the key issues, in terms of air quality, the project only has two production wells, and there would only be four pounds per day of emissions in any case. Whether accounted toward the five pound per day threshold or not, it would be below the threshold. There's some concern that's been expressed that the other well, the injection well, may at some point in the future be converted back into a production well. Well, they tried the production well route with that particular well, and it didn't work, and they converted it to an injector. It's speculation that it would be converted. However, that's integral to their project description, that is part of Condition of Approval Number One, so it would require a modification of this permit, and likely back to your commission, should they ever decide to turn that well into a producer. So, we have two production wells, two pounds of rock per well per year, and that's per day, that's four pounds, and that's below the threshold, even though, under our rules, it doesn't count either way. And as I indicated earlier, changes in the general plan policy, changes in the adopted ISAGs, or the Air Quality Assessment Guidelines, are not before you today. The project's been evaluated in accordance with the rules of the road as they currently exist. Regarding traffic, the question has been raised about traffic safety multiple times, and the applicant took the step of hiring a traffic engineer, and he's signed and stamped a traffic report saying, "There is no problem here." It's been gone 20 years without an incident, and these three one-way truck trips per day, and that is both the Agnew project, which is already approved by the board, and this project would not alter that condition. I want to make very clear how many truck trips we're talking about. The three one-way trips per day involves the total of Marada Agnew, already approved, and the project before you today. The project before you today, there's two numbers I want you to keep in mind. The applicant has included in their project description a maximum of one truckload of fluid being transported from the site per week. That's one per week. That's .29 trips per day. That's the absolute permit maximum. Well, we don't think they're going to get there. As indicated in the EIR, we estimated what the truckloads were going to be in the EIR based upon the production of these wells. Since there's no well stimulation, and the wells already have a production record that came to a halt in 2013 when the wells were idled pursuant to CUP LU 110041, and our estimate based upon actual production of the same two wells is that there'd be one truckload of fluid transported from the site every 16 days. So, what you observed in the videotape, which took, you know, a couple of minutes, that's all the trucking and all the time that would be spent relative to this project in trucking in a 16-day period, once. Once in and once out in a 16-day period. Just to be clear, the new video, which didn't work quite well, it worked well on my computer, but you could see for yourself, we asked for that to be shot and say, demonstrate to us that that truck can make the turn without going over the center line. And they have done so, and now the issue is that the operator, that is the oil operator, they don't control the trucking company, that's an independent company. And so, they can advise them to follow all traffic laws, but they can't mandate it, and that's not integral to their project. We just had to have a demonstration that it could be done, you know, in as safe a manner as possible. The site distance issue, one number we forgot to put on our slide, is that the required site distance for 35 miles an hour is 250 feet. And so, the original access to SR 150 that was approved with the project originally with CUP 3319 and the Ojai Oil Company Road, it does not meet current standards. So, we couldn't approve that access anyway, because it doesn't have adequate site distance for that speed. And so, and of course, the finding there is that more than adequate site distance at Conningstein Road in both directions. There's one other issue that I'm certain is going to be brought up, and that has to do with a well drilled in 2008. This was the Nesbit 5 that was actually drilled on the Hearthleys at a location that, you know, let me just back up. We received a complaint shortly after your hearing in 2013 on this very project, LU 110041, that the Nesbit 5 well had been drilled in the wrong place, and we received that complaint from Mr. Brooks and the SeaFrog Organization. In fact, from Richard Holly, who I don't see here today. And it's true. It was drilled in the wrong place, and it was permitted in error. And I'll just give you the full story. The well was actually originally approved as part of a modification in 1992. And at that time, when they put together the conditions of approval package, whoever put them together, and the planner attached the wrong map to the set of conditions of approval, when the map that should have been attached was a map showing precisely where the well was to be drilled, and that was on the existing Nesbit drill pad that is before you today. However, the map that was included with the conditions just showed the general outline of the lease boundary for the permit, which included both the Hearth and Nesbit leases, implying that you could drill anywhere in there. Well, this was 1992. The well was drilled 16 years later, after a change of ownership, after the planner who worked on the project retired, the planning director went to another plane of existence, and there was no one left who had any memory of what went on in 1992. And the new operator, they picked up the permit, and they said, "Well, it looks like we can drill anywhere." They came and applied, and we specifically, the counterstaff, granted a zoning clearance to drill the well where they proposed it. And so, there was no crime committed by the operator, they followed all the rules, and their permit says what it says, and no one at the county realized that that error had been made in 1992. Well, we received the complaint, and we investigated it, we acknowledged that the error occurred, we sent a letter to both Mr. Price, the operator of Marada Petroleum, and to Mr. Brooks, explaining exactly what had transpired, and agreeing with SeaFrog that an error had been made. The well, turns out, it had been unproductive, and we made the point to Marada Petroleum that the use that you were granted under the zoning clearance that allowed that well to be drilled had been completed, and under the conditions of the permit that your commission had approved, gave us the authority to require that site, the well to be abandoned and the site to be restored, which is what has happened in the last two years. The site's been regraded, the well has been officially abandoned through dogger, and the site's been reseeded, replanted. So, there is no Nesbit 5 drill site anymore. It's been completely restored, and that issue's done. But if the question comes up, has the planning division ever made a mistake, there's your answer. Oh, well, a voice in my ear compels me to add a few sentences. Because of that incident, you know, we have an entirely new process for doing zoning clearances for oil wells. They're no longer granted or issued at the counter. People apply for them, we have a whole new application, and we take a good 30 days of processing, and what we do with zoning clearances now is we look at every sheet of paper in the CUP file, make sure we have it right, we get coordinates and laps and longs, and so we have a very extensive process now in issuing a zoning clearance for an oil well to make sure that we don't do that again. And now, when I say "we," nobody alive that's here was involved with it, so I'll declare my own innocence and let others speak for them. But mistakes have been made in the past, and I can imagine that in the course of human events, could happen in the future, but not on oil wells and zoning clearances, because we have really tightened up that process.
Thank you for that. Before I open up the public hearing, and now's the time for disclosures by commissioners, so let me read this. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information, only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. So, I'll start on my left. Commissioner Rodriguez, any disclosures?
None, other than reminding the commission that I did a site inspection the last time we dealt with this intersection in April, or whenever it was, and actually went out there and observed it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kestley?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Anstott?
Yes. I was born and raised in the area, as I disclosed the last time around. My family home is a few miles. I grew up hiking and walking, Ferndale, et cetera. In a previous application, I was asked whether I should recuse myself, and I explained the situation there, and I did not. I've been asked again to recuse myself because of representation or association with the Nesbit family. To my knowledge, I have never been retained by the Nesbit family. Period. I had a good association with Joe Nesbit, deceased, who was the president of Citizens State Bank, and I was the bank attorney for many years. I've had no association whatsoever with any member of the Nesbit family, gosh, 20 years? I was not involved in the negotiation of this lease, or while I did oil and gas work involving Ferndale, I did nothing in relation to this lease, and have no specialized knowledge of the lease or the operation. I refuse to recuse myself because there is no basis in fact to do it. Other than that, I have a general knowledge of the area, because I grew up in the area and spent a lot of time up there.
Thank you. Commissioner Callie?
No disclosures, other than the previous disclosure that I have been past the intersection on the previous case.
Thank you. And I'll reiterate, I have visited the site, and in addition to that, to refresh my general recollection, I read an article online about the 2013 hearing to refresh my memory, but it doesn't contain any information that isn't already in this. So, now, is questions of staff by the commission? Are there any questions at this time? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Mr. Baca, you mentioned in your summation, an old Ojai Oil Road that at one time was in use, but no longer is available, or as I recall, does not meet the safety standards required by Caltrans. Where is that in relation to Clonestein?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, the point at which the old Ojai Oil Company Road meets with 150 is about half a mile west of Conningstein Road. And when I said it does not meet current standards for site distance, but that was the road that was actually approved for this project back in the 80s. I'm not sure what analysis was done at that time of that intersection, but that was approved for the Marada Agnew project and for this project. And of course, it was already being used by the Ojai Oil Company, which may have been the reason why it was approved. In either 1993 or 1995, depending on what you read, that road washed out at Cisar Creek, there's an at-grade crossing that was washed out in flooding, and that road's never been rebuilt, and it's now, you know, a blue line stream and a channel. But at that time, all the operators that were potentially using that crossing started using Conningstein Road, and that's part of the analysis that's in front of you.
And that resulted in the applicant's, I guess, default use of Clonestein without notification to the County Planning Commission, of a need to amend the CUP. Is that correct?
Well, actually, there is a letter in 1993 that where the applicant, at that time, a different company, had notified the county that they were going down Conningstein Road. This particular applicant we have here, who is a subsequent owner, we were not notified of the continuing use of Conningstein Road until they came in with their application, you know, sometime in, I guess, 2012. you know, sometime in, I guess, 2012.
But the CUP that they assumed specified the route ingress and egress for that particular parcel in removing oil?
Yes, it did. And it specified that you would go down Coningstein Road to meet up with the road near the Agnew lease, and then take the Ohio Oil Company road over to the highway and not use the southern portion of Coningstein Road to access 150.
The documentation, and I've read a lot of it, referenced a painted pony crossing or access to 150. What is that?
Commissioner Rodriguez? I don't know.
Okay.
That's not, before you today is evaluation of some other alternative route. Since the applicant has proposed to use Coningstein, and we've evaluated Coningstein, and not identified a significant or potentially significant impact with that use, thus, no alternative access routes were required or were analyzed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Onstad?
A couple of these bases for appeal were similar, if not identical, to a previous application that was before us. The traffic issue, for instance, has SeaFrog presented any document, documents or information that leads to a reanalysis of the traffic safety from the last petition before this board or commission?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Onstad, we've received no information, no substantial evidence of any kind that there is a significant safety hazard at that intersection.
All right. The argument regarding air quality seems to be the same or similar to the one that was previously before us. Is that correct?
That's correct, except the difference, there is a slight difference here, Commissioner Onstad. There's some information, you know, in the SeaFrog appeal report, they have, in the last month, come up with a new idea that I haven't seen before, and that is that because Marotta Petroleum owns both the Nesbit lease and the Agnew lease, that we should consider them all part of one CUP in one project, and therefore, the combined emissions of the two projects would go over five pounds a day and be significant. Well, that's, they're separate facilities, separately permitted and separately owned at various times. And so, there's no legal or rational basis to combine those facilities. And of course, as we sit here today, one of those facilities is already approved, and one of the modifications is already approved, and we're just looking at the changes of the Nesbit lease, and that's the whole of the project today. But in terms of the, you know, the general plan and the air quality assessment guidelines, many of the same themes that they presented at the previous hearings have been repeated.
I'm not sure I quite understood the analysis, but even if you gave them what they asked for on the air quality issue, the mitigation issue that they requested, did you not find that it wouldn't change the outcome at all?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, Chair Idukas and Commissioner Onstad, it wouldn't. There's only two production wells that would call four pounds a day of reactive organic compounds. The threshold is five. So, even if we ignored the general plan, which is not something I suggest in this room, and ignored the adopted ISAGs and ignored the adopted air quality assessment guidelines, we still come up less than the threshold, unless you follow this novel idea of combining multiple CUPs in one for SEQA review, which would be kind of problematic, since we have many operators like Verizon who have multiple CUPs all over the county, and we wouldn't combine them just because they're all owned by the same entity. We have no legal basis to do that.
Is SeaFrog is also requesting that the subsequent EIR evaluate the entire project? Annu, the county's basis for not doing that in 10 words or less?
Commissioner Onstad, the entire project before you has been thoroughly evaluated in the subsequent environmental impact report that's before your commission today. The argument there is that the whole of the action is everything that Mr. Price of Marotta Petroleum may be doing in the vicinity. That's not how whole of the action works. Whole of the action is whole of the action on a single project site and property. And so, it's not whole of Mr. Price's actions, it's whole of the action under SEQA. So, we have thoroughly met our SEQA requirement to analyze the whole of the action. And Mr. Barnes may wish to weigh in.
If the applicant wanted to expand the trucking operations because of expanding wells and production, they would have to come back to the county, would they not, on the traffic issue and many others, to modify a CUP? Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Onstad.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to county council regarding whole of the action. Could you explain that more, because that seems to be key into one of the points raised in the appeal?
Right. Well, the way SEQA works is, SEQA analysis follows the discretionary approvals that are required. And so, in this case, the discretionary approval is a request to modify an existing CUP that has existed for many, many years. And so, the SEQA project being analyzed is basically triggered by that specific permit modification. And as I understand SeaFrog's position, they're saying that the whole of the action, the county shouldn't just look at this one CUP. The county should look at the effects of other CUPs in the vicinity for oil operations that are run by the same operator. And that's not how SEQA works. Again, SEQA, the whole of the action is, basically flows from the discretionary approval that is before your commission. But that being said, the county does look at cumulative impacts that do take into account other similar facilities in the area. And so, for instance, the county has looked at the cumulative traffic impacts regarding the Coningstein Road. And by definition, the county's APCD rules look at the, take into account the cumulative impact on air quality, and that's the whole purpose of its permitting system. So, I kind of went broader than your question, but the bottom line is, the county historically has issued separate CUPs for separate oil facilities in this area. The operator is entitled to operate under those separate CUPs separately. And so, when any one of those CUPs, when a modifications request is, the SEQA process flows from that specific discretionary approval, and the county has no legal basis to basically open up or analyze impacts as part of that project based on other CUPs that happen to be owned by the same operator.
Well, that sounds reasonable, but my recollection was in 2013 that we did have Marotta Oil before us, and I think there, I think it was an appeal. And the commission voted three to, two of the commissioners are, one, two, two of the commissioners are gone, that voted for that, but it included the abandonment of these wells. This was the first time that SeaFrog appealed, and we've had a lot of appeals. So, could you, is that something that we can discuss today that, because my recollection was these wells were to be abandoned, and they, the project went forward anyway?
Madam Chair, harkening back to an earlier time, in my 50s, the, in 2013, the applicant, that'd be Marotta Petroleum, approached us and filed an application to modify CUP 3319. And that was the application LU-110041. And they wanted to drill additional wells at both the Hearth drill site and the Nesbit drill site. And at that time, they could not demonstrate that they had legal access to the Nesbit lease drill site, because the access road leading to the public road, that is, the road leading from the site to Coningstein Road, they could not demonstrate that they had access. And so, as we informed them, we met with them, and we informed them that the only modified permit that we could grant and we could recommend approval for would be one that would include the abandonment of the facilities on the Nesbit lease, since you do not have legal access, or at least couldn't demonstrate it at that time. And so, that was the permit that was in front of you. Now, one source of potential confusion with members of the public is that no permit is final, and any applicant and any landowner has the right to petition their government and to ask any question and get due process. So, the requirement in the CUP, which is condition number 27, that the Nesbit lease facilities be abandoned, that specifically, the project in front of you today is the modification of that to eliminate that condition and allow them to continue the operation of the Nesbit lease. Since that condition was imposed by the commission in 2013, the applicant has been involved in litigation with various private parties and has perfected in court the right to use the private roads that lead to Coningstein Road. So, they have proven access. And so, they have the right to apply for a modification of their permit and receive due process. So, that's the sequence of events. At that time, the only permit that the county could grant is one that did not include operations on the Nesbit lease.
Okay. And for purposes of discussion, would there be air quality thresholds reached had they had demonstrated their ability to access the Nesbit lease at that time?
Madam Chair, no, is the simple answer, because remember, the oil wells are permitted facilities, and they don't count against the thresholds under our permitting scheme. And so, it would not have crossed the threshold. One thing I'd like to point out is that, you know, the, Mr. Barnes and I, I thank him for augmenting my discussion. While we've evaluated the whole of the action that's before us, we have looked at cumulative traffic and cumulative air quality. We, in Appendix D of your EIR, includes an assessment and an estimate of all the traffic associated with all oil companies and all trucking along Coningstein Road for a 38-year period. So, it's not like we have ignored the other projects. In addition, the EIR, in the EIR section, includes a specific discussion and disclosure of how many trips are involved with both the Marotta Agnew, Marotta Nesbit, and other projects in the vicinity. So, under cumulative analysis, we include that, but that's not a whole of the action issue. We have evaluated the whole of the action that's before you, which is just to turn those wells back on, which is, you know, that's all there is.
Thank you. Yes, further questions?
Mr. Barton? So, these three wells we're talking about today were part of the Hearth lease, Marotta brought before us before. And they were excluded, excluded prior to approval of the CUP?
Christina, could you go up and roll that slide?
3319, is that correct?
Commissioner Rodriguez, we're just going to roll the map back, just for illustrating purposes, but the permit that was before you before involved and the current permit...
That's 3319?
Well, 3319 and its subsequent, which is currently LU-110041, both encapsulate and govern oil operations on the Hearth and Nesbit leases.
Correct.
And we'll get to a picture soon. There we go. So, the blue line on the screen outlines the two leases. The southern rectangular lease is the Hearth lease, and the northern zigzag lease is the Nesbit lease. The CUP is the blue line. And so, the, at that time, what your commission looked at and approved was the abandonment of the Nesbit lease facilities to the north and allowing nine new wells on the Hearth lease and drilling site that's to the south, just right along the southernmost blue line. That was what was before you before. So, and of course, with the abandonment under condition of approval number 27 of the Hearth lease, well, that's the lease that's accessed through Coningstein Road. The Hearth lease is accessed by another private oil field road that goes directly to Highway 150 to the south, so it doesn't involve Coningstein Road. So, that's the history of where this went. And the nine wells that, nine new wells that your commission approved were specifically required to be on the Hearth lease drilling pad, which is on this map with an arrow is that drill site to the south. And so, that's the current state of affairs under the current permit, is that they must abandon the area to the north and drill, and they are allowed to drill and do various things on the site to the south.
Okay, I understand that. And so, I guess a question in my mind is, why aren't we back here, rather than a new CUP? Why aren't we here to amend the previous CUP to include the existing drill sites, since it was part of the original application, 3319? Because what we're doing now, we're fragmenting, obviously, activities, and as it's been explained to us, each individual lease and operation is evaluated in its whole as an independent activity, independent of the adjacent activity, which in fact, were both initially the original project here.
Commissioner?
Am I incorrect in my assumption that we can't do a modification of the old lease, but rather, we have to apply for, the applicant has to apply for a new CUP here?
Commissioner Rodriguez, the applicant, there is an existing CUP. That's CUP LU-110041. The applicant has applied for a modification of that CUP. The project before you is the modification of the CUP, not all the other things that were approved, for which the applicant is requesting no changes. They have a perfected CUP to drill nine wells. That's not before you today, and that CUP was granted by this commission and not appealed and is a final administrative decision of the county. So, the action before you today is a modification of the existing CUP, LU-110041, just to allow the Nesbit lease facilities to be reactivated. And that's the scope of this hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, next, I will open the public hearing, and because this is a de novo hearing, we will have the presentation of the applicant, and all persons in favor of that action. Then, we will have the presentation from the appellant, and have everyone who speaks in favor of denial of the application, and rebuttal, and closing comments. And how are we, are we ready to, are we ready to go? Okay. Would the applicant please come on down?
You might want to learn about the parking.
Yeah, the parking situation is such that you will get a ticket at 11:30, depending on what time you got here this morning. So, I'll remind you again. Peter Goldenring, attorney for the applicant.
Thank you, Chair Idukas and commissioners. I will answer some of the historic questions that were asked, including some of the comments by Commissioner Rodriguez, so that we all have clarity around this. But before I do, I hope you will let me for a moment wax a little philosophical. I think this is, should have been an MND. I'm not even sure this is a full SEQA analysis, given the history of what we're talking about. But for my part, I read the SeaFrog filing, and I stopped at the first page when I saw a county fire truck, as an example of something that should be considered around what we're dealing with. And so, I hope that today we'll focus on facts and not fear, on truth and not fantasy, and that we can have a conversation. And I have shared those thoughts with some of my friends in SeaFrog, because there are projects, I think, that deserve... projects, I think, that deserve a deep look. And I would respectfully submit that this isn't one of them, and I would like to be standing and supporting SeaFrog on some of their concerns around projects where there are real concerns. But this project is three wells that were drilled in the early 70s, two production, one reinjection. They exist, the infrastructure is there, there is no change on anything that is there at all. It's a simple turn-on of a switch. And it involves, by our best analysis and the maximum on the CUP, one trip per week. And Mr. Baca tells you that he thinks we're dreaming that it's going to be one every other week. So, this is an extraordinarily small footprint, in terms of what is before you. Answering a couple of the questions that were asked, and I think maybe I can digress for a moment. When I saw the letter related to recusal request for Vice Chair Anstott, I confirmed two things, and I think it's important to be on the record, given some of the accusations that have transpired. First of all, Marata Petroleum and Scott Price have never employed Mr. Anstott for any legal services. The second is, I represent the Nesbit family. My firm is counsel for them. And I reached out to Kate Nesbit, who is the manager of the Nesbit family ownership, which is involved, and I, and she happens to be in Switzerland. When I sent her an email yesterday, because that's when I saw the most recent accusation, I asked her that question. Has the family retained Mr. Anstott at all? And they said no. So, I confirmed that, and I want both your panel to know that and the record to be clear that the suggestions relative to Mr. Anstott simply are not true, and I've confirmed them with both of my clients. At the risk of being somewhat repetitive from the last hearing, but answering some of the questions, the Nesbit property is essentially at an elevation roughly consistent with Konigstein Road, the end of Konigstein Road, which goes up. The Hearth lease property, for the most part, is below the ridge and adjacent to the CRC location. There is no physical road or connection between the upper plateau area, which is the Nesbit family property, where these mineral rights are, and the Hearth lease down below. So, the comments by Mr. Baca about the Hearth CUP and the wells that were approved around that, those are down below, they're not up above where the Nesbit property is, and they would ingress and egress through Painted Pony Road. Painted Pony Road is the road that comes across, and I think there's a lock gate there, and it goes into the large CRC facility.
Would it be helpful to get a map up and a little red pointer, so that you can explain?
Can, if there's a topo map that...
Just because you're referencing the road?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
I'll rely on Brian or Christina. Yeah, that's, yeah, there you go. Perfect. So, where do I point? So, you can't really see it here.
You're going to have to go back to where the microphones are, so that we can pick up your voice in the recording? Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. If we can look on the left side, you can see a bit of the topo map here, where this is the lower portion, and this up on, where the site is, is up on the higher portion. The Hearth drill pad was accessed via the La Broche Canyon Road, which I'll talk about in a moment. That's the small portion of the Hearth lease that is in the upper portion. But the major portion of the Hearth lease is down here, and this over here is where CRC is, and Painted Pony is down below, if that makes sense to you. Okay, all right. So, the notion, or the comments or concerns around Nesbit versus Hearth, the ingress and egress are completely different. There's nothing before you and nothing that we would understand to be permitted that would allow anything relative to the Hearth lease, as it's in that small portion where it comes over the ridge, which is right here, where it comes up over the ridge from there. So, all we're talking about is turning the switch on two wells that are producing and one reinjection well that go back into the 1970s. The use of the Konigstein Road, we talked about when we were last here, and at the risk of being somewhat repetitive, you will recall that my client's predecessor, certainly as to Agnew, and also as to this site, my client acquired the mineral rights lease on the Nesbit property in the early 2000s. That prior operator had notified the county of the washout on Sisart Creek and had communicated the use of Konigstein Road. My client came in some number of years later, that was the use that was ongoing by all of the operators up in that area, and nobody recognized there was an issue. That first came on the table in that original process that led to the 2013 event, which we'll talk about. And county thought there had been permission granted for Konigstein, and there was a very extensive search through lots of old dusty records, because everybody thought there had been permission granted. And when that exhaustive search was completed, and your staff concluded that that had not occurred, the direction was, okay, included in the application, we need to get this solved. So, that's what happened in the Agnew process, and that's what's in part happening in this process. It's an effort to deal with this event that happened before my client, and in an effort to address, really, I think, what everybody thought had already happened, which is that because of that old washout, Konigstein had been approved. My client, Mr. Price, who's here, you may recall, this company, these oil leases started with his grandfather, he's local, all the employees are local, all the revenue stays local, all the taxes paid are local, he's not some out-of-town person coming in and raping and pillaging, other than this Konigstein Road situation. This is not an applicant who has a history of violating any of your rules or regulations, you have no pictures or contentions of environmental, lack of attention, or lack of appropriate stewardship for the properties. And I would remind you, certainly as to this property, this, these are mineral rights that my client only leases, the Nesbit family owns them, they are the ones that have leased them and sought to implement them for purposes of enjoying the revenues from them. The last time we were here and in that whole process, I heard from some of you, and especially Commissioner Rodriguez, some concerns around this intersection. So, my client went and spent the money to hire a traffic engineer to do that evaluation, and the direction to that traffic engineer was, don't just look at Nesbit, which is one truck trip a week, include Agnew. We want you to include Agnew, because that would be the question logically that we would be asked. Why didn't you include both because of the concerns that were raised? So, we spent the money to do that, and the folks who did that work, or you've seen their reports before, they're not in our pocket, they're not hired guns, they're independent folks, and they confirmed what your staff has said through all of this, that this is just not an issue on Konigstein. And the second thing, as Mr. Baca said, was, Mr. Baca said to us, can the truck make a right without going over the middle line? You know, what is really going on here? And they're not our trucks, and we don't control them. So, we went to the company and said, we want your driver to do this, and by the way, he needs to pay attention and follow the law. Not that we can require that, but we certainly can communicate that. And so, they went and they did it, and we took the video, and we provided it to your staff, to address the concerns or comments about, oh, my God, you can't make a right turn without going over the yellow, the world's going to end. Because those were the two claims that were made last time, and so, we went to the, my client was put to the task to show that they're just not true, and we hope we've satisfied you, that these really just are not real concerns. So, let me then briefly address a bit how we got here. In the old events that happened in 2010 to 2000, ultimately to you in 2013, I wasn't involved, I became involved afterwards. But as I understand it, from looking at the file and having extensive conversations with your staff, basically, the application really had nothing to do with Nesbit, other than its continuation. It was around these other new wells, this one Hearth well and the ones down below. And Mr. Baca reached out or had some communications with the SeaFrog folks, who include the property owners now. This is Konigstein. No, is there a, is there a map that shows it to?
What, to Agnew?
Yeah, no, yeah, to Nesbit, to Konigstein. Do we have a?
Yeah, that would be the roadmap.
Is there one?
Why don't you stand there with their mouse?
If you can, and then I can explain to you exactly, in part, how we got here and why we're here. I apologize for not having my own PowerPoint. Thanks, Christina. Oh, perfect. Nope, that one, that one works. Yeah, that works, that's perfect. Gets me close enough, though. Gets me close enough. Konigstein's over here. There's one more?
Yeah.
So, what you have here, this is the Nesbit site, the Hearth site and CRC.
Again, I have to remind you to go back to the...
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
The Hearth site and the CRC site is up here, Painted Pony's down here, below the ridge. The Nesbit property, and I know this because we were in the litigation, which I'll discuss for a moment, actually goes back, it's only three owners, different from the original 1860 to 1880 land grants. We actually had to go back to the original, National Archives pulled the original land grant records. And what the land grant records show is that back in the 1860s and 80s, this road, La Broche Canyon Road, which comes down to the Nesbit site here, and comes across and comes to Konigstein, actually existed. And under federal law, under R-2477, if it interests you, it actually is a public road legally. But what happened is, when that process started in the 2010-11 timeframe, Mr. Baca had a conversation with the owners of the property that is at the intersection of La Broche Canyon Road and Konigstein. It actually used to be an old county sheriff facility, they were going to turn it into a boys' camp sheriff's facility, if anybody wants to go back into those cobwebs. And the road was there and had been there for many, many years. Those folks, Mr. Rainwater and Ms. Ratcliffe, Ms. Ratcliffe is one of the original founders of SeaFrog, were asked by both my client and Mr. Baca to confirm that Marata had the right to use La Broche Canyon Road that traverses the top portion of their property between Nesbit and Konigstein. There's actually a finger of federal land that comes under La Broche Canyon Road as well, and my client has full rights to use that. And the Raincliff-Ratcliffe folks refused to provide that authorization, and then posted a no trespassing sign. That's when what Mr. Baca described happened. Basically, my client was given a choice, either everything comes to a stop, because it was one original big CUP, or it breaks into two, which is just the portion that serviced off of La Broche Canyon Road and all the other stuff. So, the decision was to break it in two, process the other stuff, and because we could not at that time prove legal access, the position of the county was, well, then you have to abandon. But if you can prove legal access, you then can come back and modify that abandonment. So, that's the legal process that was followed. My client sought to negotiate and resolve the matter, offered frankly, money to get this done, the folks were unavailing. Litigation was filed, a preliminary injunction was granted by Judge O'Neill, that was then provided to the county. When the county got the preliminary injunction, they said, okay, you have basic legal access, we will start this process up again. And then, while they were processing it through to get us here today, we then concluded the litigation with full legal rights to use La Broche Canyon Road, and we've provided that to the county, and I believe it's been reviewed by Mr. Barnes, who's confirmed that there's no issue around that. So, the how we got here was, to be blunt, SeaFrog. Because the folks who could have just simply said back in 2012 and 13, yes, that road's been there since the late 1800s, we don't dispute a right to use it, and it would have processed through, and you would have had everything then, including these three wells continuing in existence, they blocked that. And so, my client was at that point forced to this separation and litigation, which is certainly not what my client wanted. I can't tell you how much money he spent just trying to deal with the legal rights of the road, or this process, but that seems to be his lot in life around these locations. So, we're here today simply asking that these three wells from the 1970s be allowed to come online. Mr. Baca is absolutely correct that there's no other wells being sought, there's no expansion being sought, there's no infrastructure being sought. The reinjection well is a reinjection well. Reinjection wells don't go back to being production wells, except in an extraordinary circumstance, but even that would require a modified CUP. We'd have to come back for that. So, we would urge your support for this very, very limited CUP, one truck trip a week, and available to answer any questions. Thank you for letting me run a little over your time.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
What about enhanced techniques, hydraulic fracturing and...
Oh, that's, none of that's permitted. In my memory, I haven't sat and read the CUP directly, but in my conversations with Mr. Baca, he's confirmed it, as with the Agnew, that there is no well stimulation, there is no hydraulic fracturing, there is none of that permitted. Any of that kind of stuff would require coming back to the county for a CUP modification, which would come to you. So, no more than one truck, tanker truck, a week, no hydraulic fracturing, no nothing.
Thank you.
So...
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, can I take you back to your video that you presented? We tried to view here.
The video?
On the truck making a right-hand turn off of 150?
Yes, sir.
Onto Konigstein.
Do you want me to ask him to run it, or?
No, I mean, I don't think, I need it. Obviously, he's able to make a right-hand turn without crossing over the double yellow on 150. on 150.
That's correct, that's how I saw it.
But it's still, there's still an issue on Konigstein, as I assume, because it wasn't clear from the camera angle, that the truck can still make that turn onto Konigstein without crossing the double yellow on Konigstein.
And I don't know the answer.
And I assume, and I'm assuming, that the reason the truck driver was able to turn onto Konigstein without violating the double yellow on 150 is because he had to go onto the, I guess, westbound or down exiting lane of Konigstein to take advantage of that turn with the trailer behind him. And that may be, in fact, why, in the past, drivers have crossed 150 and that double yellow to turn onto Konigstein, to stay within that traffic lane going up the hill. It seems to me, and I've been there, and there's a slight grade just beyond the bridge, I don't know what degree is, six, seven degree, I don't know. It's significant for that short a period, short a time. It seems to me that if somebody's sitting at the bottom of the road on Konigstein, ready to turn left, and a truck is there, they can't turn left safely. Well, certainly, they can't turn left if the truck is in the process of making a turn. So, either they either have to back off, back up onto the bridge and off of it, far enough for the truck to make the turn. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, no, I'm listening to you. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I appreciate, and you know where I'm going with this.
Yeah, and the answer, I mean, I guess my answer is, I don't know the what-ifs. I mean, I suppose there's in all, in the world, all possible what-ifs. I guess my comments to you would be, we hired a traffic engineer to evaluate the intersection, and you've seen their report. They say there are no issues. The staff and the traffic engineers have looked at the data for 20, 30 years, and there has not been any reported issue with any tanker truck ever in that intersection. And I'm confident that if a resident of Konigstein had experienced what you described in these last 20-plus years, we would hear about it, we would know about it. But certainly, we never heard about it in the Agnew, and we haven't heard about it now. But I, I mean, that's all I know, Commissioner Rodriguez. I don't, I know it's safe, and I can't, I don't know how to handle every what-if. I mean, the issue that was argued last time was, "The right-hand turn can't be made without going over the double yellow, oh, my God, it's, you know, the end of the world." So, we said to the tanker guy, "What are your drivers doing? They need to obey the laws, you know, why? Tell us why." And they said, "No, no, no, they can do it." And we said, "Okay, well, show us."
And I agree with you, the video does show that. But I guess beyond that, one is, you're asking me certainly to assume that it can be done completely legal. And in fact, based on my experience and what I've observed, if there's a vehicle there, the turn can't be made, probably cannot be made without going over the double yellow to make the turn, unless that vehicle exits that lane coming off of Konigstein Road, or backs up to allow that turn to occur, thereby not violate...
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not gonna, I haven't gone out there and done that analysis. I wasn't there when the video was taken, frankly, 'cause it was, this was just go do it, we need to see if it can be done.
I just wanted to share my observation and...
Yeah, I understand your concerns. And again, I would only say two things. One is, I've heard your county council say repeatedly over the years, "We can't," you know, it's their legal road, their roads, people have the right to use the roads, they're supposed to use them legally, and we expect that they will use them legally. That's, I've heard from Mr. Smith and from Mr. Barnes over the years. And the second is, or the third, the couple things. The second is, I didn't hear that from the traffic engineer folks. They went out there, they analyzed, that they knew what the tanker trucks looked like. They had all this data, and I would've expected if they perceived this to be an issue, it would've been in their report. I will tell you, they never communicated that. And the last is, the empirical data. I mean, we all remember how lengthy that was in the Agnew project by Mr. Baca, who went through all the years of analysis, all of the 4,000-plus truck trips, you know, all the other stuff, and there have never been any reports, not just of accidents, but of what your concern is. That's not to say it's not a real concern, that's not to say it's not an accurate perception, I'm not suggesting that at all, Commissioner Rodriguez. I'm just saying, the folks behind me, I'm sure would have said that to you if it was there.
No, I understand, and I'm familiar with the state's Switters reports, and how those are all put together, but that was just my observation.
Yeah, no, and I understand it.
Thank you.
And we certainly, you know, we've communicated since that last video to the tanker truck company. People, you are representing us in a certain sense, you need to be sure your drivers follow the law. We've tried to make that very clear to the tanker truck company, because that's what they're supposed to do.
Are there any other questions to the speaker? Commissioner Callie.
Now, the size of the truck we saw in the video is the maximum size of the truck allowed on that road for that purpose?
Correct. My understanding, yes, my understanding of the way Mr. Baca has written the CUP, and I'll defer to him, is the vehicle, the tanker truck load once a week is defined in those parameters. It can't go bigger at all.
Right.
So, he's limited the CUP to tie to that vehicle.
Okay, my question is, then, is there any idea of how, what percentage of the time the truck is that large historically? Is it always that size truck that goes up there, or is it sometimes a smaller truck that's only one tank?
And the answer is, while it can just be one truck, generally, the tanker truck company uses the configuration you've seen for several reasons. One is, it substantially reduces the number of trucks, right, to one a week, or one every 16 days, as Mr. Baca suggests. So, by using that configuration, it substantially reduces it. And that's why there are tanks on site, because they capture the fluids, and then, when they reach a certain point, they make one trip. The tanker truck company wants to be efficient, we pay them to do that sort of thing. So, it's my understanding that is the tanker truck configuration that they use, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Before we go on to the next speaker, we're just gonna take a five-minute break, be back at 10:20. Next, I understand that we have a staff member that would answer questions that have been posed by the commission. Could you come forward and state your name, please?
Good morning, my name is David Fleisch, I'm the Director of the Transportation Department of the Public Works Agency for Ventura County.
Thank you, and I understand you're here to answer some of the questions that the commission has raised.
I'll do the best I can.
Thank you so much.
I don't know what the questions are, so I apologize, you'll have to state them for me.
I apologize, I'm sorry about that. Commissioner Rodriguez, do you want to restate your concerns regarding Konigstein and 150?
Yeah, we've gotten the reports from staff via transportation. You guys went out and checked the site and, I guess, conducted a test out there, and were satisfied that you could turn off of 150 onto Konigstein Road at the bridge and do it without crossing over the double yellow on 150, in essence, is that correct?
Well, I haven't done the study you're addressing, but the traffic engineering report was done, and we've reviewed that, and we concur with the report.
Okay.
And it's, the road is safe as it is, and has been for quite some time, so...
Yeah, and all the information we've gotten indicates there have been really no tanker accidents there at that intersection, which is part of, I think, what you're referring to.
Correct.
We just saw a video, and I apologize, it's not available to you. Basically, it showed a tanker, tanker trailer turning off of Konigstein, on, excuse me, off of 150 onto Konigstein, making that right-hand turn without violating the double yellow as it did that, the double yellow on 150. But it appeared, and unfortunately, the video didn't show, the angle of the video didn't show, the turning movement actually on Konigstein Road. And so, I for one couldn't conclude that that could be done safely without violating the double yellow also on Konigstein Road. It appears that with the trailer, you've gotta violate the double yellow on Konigstein and intrude into that lane coming down the hill in order to make that turn without violating the double yellow on 150. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah, they gotta make a wide turn in order to, and not violate 150's double yellow. Did your staff do a site inspection out there where actually a truck was turning, or any sort of site inspection at all?
We've checked, as we do for anything like this, we check the normal things, you check for safety, you check for site distance, you check for lengths and so forth. The road is still as it was designed the time it was there, and it meets the standards necessary for the traffic that are on the road. When you have vehicular movements, that's as much dependent upon the driver of the vehicle as it is the road. So, just the fact that a truck drives over a line doesn't mean that the road can't handle it, it means that's how the person operated the vehicle. Both those roads in that area are low-volume roads, the traffic that's on them is such that they're more than adequate to handle the traffic, both truck and car traffic that are there in a safe manner.
That explains what I needed to know, without asking you a hypothetical, and I won't put you in that situation. Thank you.
Okay.
Would it be helpful for you to see the video that has been presented to us, to...
I'm aware of the video, I just, I didn't do the video, and that's what Mr. Rodriguez asked. My staff did not do that, planning did. So, I wanted to make sure you understood it wasn't my staff who did the video. I am aware of the video, I know what it shows, so it's not necessary for me to see the video.
To my eyes, it shows that, under the very best circumstances, the operator of the truck, which I understand is not the applicant, is physically, because of the geometry of the road and the length of the truck, it's physically impossible to make the right-hand turn without going into the oncoming traffic or outgoing traffic of Konigstein.
Okay.
Or, or they could, you know, swing wide and go over the double yellow lines if there were traffic coming that other way. Is that something that is considered safe because it's a low-volume road? What is the county's standards regarding the safety of that?
There isn't a county standard for safety in can somebody drive or not drive over a line. We have a design standard for roads that was in effect at the time the roads were built, and there's no requirement to update that to current standards, just because the standards change. So, the road at the time it was built was appropriate for the traffic, and with the volumes of traffic that are on both of those roads today, the road is still more than acceptable for the traffic that's there. Because of the low volume, and you can even see this at the corner right out here at Victoria and Telephone, that trucks frequently turn wide and cross a line. That in and of itself does not make the road dangerous, or does not make the traffic dangerous, they have to watch what's there. And in that area, there's low volume as the traffic is, they would wait until the lane cleared before they made their turn. That's a perfectly safe operation. Yes, they're crossing the line, but that in and of itself doesn't make it unsafe.
Okay, so, purposes of the county in coming up with an idea of what is safe and what is not safe, because this is something that really is key to the appeal that's before us, is at some time in the past, it said it could, it might not be safe, or it could be unsafe. And so, you know, they're using this road now, but for the county, what's considered safe is you just wait, or you back up, or you make accommodations, and if you go over the line, that's not considered an unsafe road, it's just site distance, and, you know, that you're not gonna fall into the creek, or...
We don't use the term, this is a safe or unsafe road.
Okay.
I don't know where that comes from, but that's not the term we use. If you're, what we do to look at whether or not there's an issue that warrants some engineering change or something to a road, is we look at several factors. We look at site distance, we look at speed, we look at just the basic condition of the road, is there some maintenance that needs to be done? We do an annual safety analysis of all the roads and intersections in the county, and that is essentially looking at what collisions have occurred in a rolling three-year period. There's standards that are set for what are acceptable. If you've read much of the, or anything in the newspaper, literature, the majority of collisions that occur on any road are due to driver error, not due to the engineering of the road. So, we do an analysis of those collisions, make a determination what the causes of them were, and then see if there's anything that we need to do to change the road to prevent those accidents from happening in the future. In that area up there, there've been no accidents, there've been no issues, there've been nothing that says we need to do anything other than leave the road as it exists today. And for the amount of traffic that's there, and for the amount that's being added from this project, there's nothing that should change. And that's what the engineering report that came, or traffic report that came from, and we concur with that report.
So, that's the, let me back up a little minute. When I visited the site last, I noticed that there was quite a lot of damage to the K-rail, you know, cars scraping up, or trucks scraping up against it. And I also noticed, at that time, skid marks right at the intersection. So, that wouldn't give any kind of indication that there might be engineering solutions to improve that T-intersection and make it, you know, I don't know, wider or something? It's just, what you're saying is, it's speed and site distance, that's the only...
No, we also look at the number of collisions, and...
And there were none.
Just, yeah, just the fact that there's skid marks there, it could've been some kid, you know, testing out his new hot rod. We have no idea why they're there. We rely on that collision data that we get from the California Highway Patrol, who does vehicular enforcement for county roads as well as for state highways. So, in that area, both Highway 150 and Konigstein, any collisions would be reported through the California Highway Patrol. And we have none in that area, or two, I think, in the last 15 years, and none of them have anything to do with any trucks. And so, there's no reason for us to think there's a necessity to go improve the intersection from a safety perspective, because there's nothing that would lead us to believe it.
And that's your expert opinion as a traffic engineer?
I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm the County Transportation Department Director, but my traffic engineer has reviewed the report, and he concurs with it.
Got it. Is there anything else?
Please, to follow. Dave, you never saw that video we're referring to?
Yes, I have, actually, seen the video. I just didn't create the video.
Oh, yeah, no, the applicant created the video. And after that, Transportation communicated to planning that it appeared to be okay, from your perspective.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I have a question.
Okay, the next, you have another question?
Staff question. Can I hold that, or should do it now?
Go ahead, while it's in your...
I have a question of staff. Mr. Baca?
Do you need me still?
No, I don't, David, thank you.
Thanks, David.
Just to follow up to Transportation Director's testimony, so you got the report verbal, I assume, written for Transportation, that you included in your summation to the commission, correct?
Yes, it's in Exhibit D, the one, Exhibit, excuse me, Exhibit 16D, I believe.
I know, I've seen a lot of paperwork.
I apologize for the volume.
No, no, that's part of the job. And subsequent to that, then, you communicated with Caltrans to share the information you got from Transportation? That resulted... That resulted in a subsequent letter from Caltrans saying that they're good with that intersection?
We, Commissioner Rodriguez, we, you know, I have to choose my words carefully, because we're dealing with two different projects, Agnew and Nesbit, those are two separate applications, right? So, we received a letter on the Marata-Agnew project, which is now approved by the board, but received a letter on that, and because of that letter, we went out and evaluated, you know, the issues that were raised by Caltrans, and we responded directly to each of those issues in our response to comments. And as part of our coordination with Caltrans, we sent them a specific letter saying, "Here are the findings in the supplemental environmental impact report," at that time a draft, "and here is how the County Transportation Department views these issues." And our answer then was that we don't see any substantial issue here, and no nexus to require intersection improvements, just as similar to what Mr. Fleisch, Director Fleisch just said. And then, subsequent to that, we, they, you know, the Marata-Nesbit project was under review, and then, subsequent to that, we received a letter on the Nesbit project, which involves the use of the same intersection, and all of that stuff in the first letter that Caltrans had was all taken out of that letter, and we just got, we don't expect there's going to be a problem here, and the same person signed the letter. So, Diana Watson was the signatory on both letters, and so, I think she must have known what she had written before when she wrote the second letter. So, we've coordinated with Caltrans. Now, even recently, prior to the planning director hearing on this particular application, I had a conversation, actually directed by your commission, regarding signage, an additional safety signage, and what was the procedure to have the signage done. And so, I talked to Caltrans at that time, and I also had a conversation with them about, you know, the information we had gathered in the EIR, and I sent everything, including the previous truck video. All of that was sent to Caltrans. So, they've had all that information for months, and they have maintained the letter that they've already provided us in this project, in which they identify no significant traffic impacts, and really no significant issues. And, you know, you look at those two letters and compare them, this was before we provided them information, and afterwards, their concerns, at least in writing, disappeared. So, we've addressed this issue to the extent that we can.
You dotted the i's and crossed the t's.
Well, that actually will be up to your commission to decide.
Thank you.
The test we're applying here is, not that there isn't any effect at all, but a substantial effect, is it not, before it rises to a level of something we have to deal with? I mean, there's no doubt that adding one more truck or trailer changes the situation, but what's the threshold where we have to act? I mean, we're talking about substantial impacts, aren't we?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Onstott, that's correct. I mean, that's part of the reason why people don't talk about whether something's safe or not safe, because each project is an evaluation as to whether it's causing a substantial effect on whatever level of traffic safety that is there now. And so, our, in the judgment of the county staff and in the traffic engineer retained by the applicant, adding one truck load, the transport of one truck load of fluid every week does not cause a safety impact or substantial change in what is there now. And there's no evidence that that intersection has been operating at an unsafe condition. In the 12 years of Caltrans records, there've only been two accidents at that intersection, and neither involved a truck.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last comment.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Vaca, related to the signage that came out of our last hearing recommendation, has that signage been put in place specifically as it relates to truck crossing ahead or reposting the speed limit closer to that intersection? And I realize Caltrans says, what, three to five miles generally to post speed limits, but it is a curbed road. Has that been done yet by Caltrans?
Well, procedurally, the Board of Supervisors imposed upon the Marata-Agnew project, and that was at the behest of Supervisors Long and Zaragoza, the requirement to put some safety signage, the current signage for speed limit meets Caltrans standards, but it's, of course, a mile down the road. And so, the concept approved by the Board of Supervisors that you need signs on both sides of Koningstein Road in the immediate vicinity. So, what is going to be required to be put there is actually an application to Caltrans to install speed limit signs on both sides of Koningstein Road, the 35 miles an hour, along with signs on both sides warning on drivers coming to that intersection that truck turns will be occurring ahead. Now, when I say we're required to provide an application, in this case, county staff will be preparing the application with, you know, Director Fleisch's group, as to what we're actually going to turn in and propose to Caltrans. Then, it's up to the Caltrans committee, that is, the agency's committee that reviews these things, as to whether they will allow those signs to be put on the state highway. All of that effort is required and funded by the applicant.
Thank you.
So, is that occurring, or is that ongoing, or is that something that will occur?
Well, actually, I intended to do it prior to this meeting, so I could tell you that I had done the application, but I will have to admit a failure that I haven't done it yet, but I'm going to do it shortly.
Okay.
And I would point out, since this is appropriate time, is that the Commissioner Rodriguez's concerns about motorcycles made its way to the Board of Supervisors, and that's why there's no Saturday trucking. And so, that specific point that Commissioner Rodriguez raised at the last Planning Commission hearing was heard by somebody at a higher level.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, Bob Poole is our next speaker, and then we'll go to the appellant's. Mr. Poole?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Bob Poole. I'm with the Western States Petroleum Association. Also point out, I'm a Ventura County resident. I'd like to put a broader responsible perspective on this today, touching on economics a little bit, but primarily talking on the environmental concerns that have been raised by the appellant. I'd also like to disclose that I'm not here representing Marata. Marata's not a member of our association. However, I am representing other members who also operate in this county, and our goal is to continue to provide affordable and reliable energy in a manner that is safe and environmentally responsible. We appreciate the amount of time the county planning staff took in their thorough analysis of the appellant's claims, the thoughtful responses, and the recommendations for denial of the appeal based on the facts. The oil and gas industry is always open to work with your commission and the county planning staff to ensure all letters of the law are followed, and that all regulations by no less than 17 oversight agencies are adhered to at all times. Now, briefly, I would be remiss if I didn't touch on economics. Domestic oil extraction is important to California and Ventura, and I'll talk about that in just a minute, from an environmental perspective. It is an economic engine, not just employing the people that work in our industry, but also those who benefit from it, suppliers, contractors, charities, all of the various aspects, including government, with property tax that goes to schools and to the general Now, I'd like to speak a little bit about the environmental impacts, and while I think our industry completely is in alignment with the Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas, because the word "responsible," I think, is the operative word there. And so, while we appreciate other organizational efforts to monitor oil and gas operations, there are simply misperceptions regarding the industry, which include a lack of awareness that the state of California, and the county for that matter, have the most stringent and comprehensive regulations over oil and gas operations of any oil-producing state, country, or region. I think that gets me to my next point real quick, which really gives me pause. I don't know if you're aware, state of California, we use between 1.8 and 2 million barrels of oil every day. The governor has pointed out that we consume 40 million gallons of gasoline every day. You know where we get most of that? From overseas. Over a million barrels comes from overseas, from countries that don't like us very much. Saudi Arabia, for example, is one of the main suppliers for California. So, when we're speaking about responsible oil and gas, we need to speak about domestic production, where we have the most stringent environmental regulations on the planet. We have those four-letter words, SEQA, for example. So, when you're speaking about responsible oil and gas production, let's do it here. Fortunately, Mother Nature has given us ample reserves to do that. And if we end oil production in California, and specifically in Ventura County, we're going to bring more oil in. We're just not going to drop off and stop using it. It's going to come in over tankers, that's where it comes in. Most of it's coming in, as I said, from the Middle East. Takes a tanker 27 days to get here with a million barrels of oil in it? There's 30 tankers lined up right now, a day apart, making their way here from the Middle East. I think that's an important, responsible concept to remember when you're making decisions about domestic oil production. Again, on behalf of the Western States Petroleum Association and our members, we strongly urge you to trust in your staff's thorough, objective, and continual analysis of this project, and follow their recommendations to deny the appeal based on the facts. This is the responsible action to take. Our workforce is proud of our commitment to safety and environmental protection as we invest throughout the county, and we look forward to working with you and to continue to produce energy in a safe and responsible manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions in the speaker?
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, now, we're going to hear from the appellant, and I have the first speaker being Carol Hawley. And I understand that Carol Hawley has also submitted Exhibit F, which I will pass along. This is our only copy.
Oh, I have more copies, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that. She's going to explain it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, can I please have the first slide? Before the slide comes up, I'd like to begin by introducing myself. I'm Carol Hawley. I'm a retired elementary principal who served as an educational leader in Ojai Unified School District for 25 years. I'm a parent of three children, and I have 5.9 grandchildren. The .9 is due any day. My husband and I are raising a 17-year-old foster child who we proudly support and who is excelling in ways that would make any parent proud. We babysit our grandchildren two days a week. I just returned from a trip to Alaska. I contribute to SeaFrog as a volunteer when I can. Therefore, the paperwork that I'm submitting today is when I could. SeaFrog would like to thank you for listening to us and considering our comments with such frequency lately. I recently read the Planning Commission handbook and was interested to find this paragraph explaining the purpose of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission adds to the staff recommendations the view of the ordinary citizen as to how the county will be developed and maintained. So, we really appreciate the opportunity today to share our ordinary citizen views with you. SeaFrog does not oppose oil and gas development. Rather, we are here to ensure that permits are issued with the greatest protections for the environment and for the public. The story today starts with Nesbit 5, Hearth 5 oil well drilled in 2008. I would not raise this before you today or bring it up to demonstrate that there are problems with the staff. Everyone makes mistakes. We hold nothing against the staff for Hearth 5. What we are concerned about will be revealed soon. The Nesbit 5 well, renamed Hearth 5, was drilled on the Hearth lease, and it should never have been authorized because it was drilled in a location that was never part of a SEQA review or evaluation. In a letter to SeaFrog dated December 3, 2013, signed by Ebony McGee, on behalf of Kim Pearlheart and Brian Baca, finding number two stated, "The Nesbit 5 well was drilled by Marata Petroleum at a location authorized by the county through the issuance of a zoning clearance. As explained herein, the drilling of Nesbit 5 was authorized at a location that was not intended or evaluated in the SEQA document prepared for CUP 3319. Hearth 5, first known as Nesbit 5, has now been abandoned, and the site is in some state of restoration. At the inception of SeaFrog, several Ojai residents became aware of an oil company that wanted to drill nine new oil wells on an active oil CUP located in Upper Ojai. After attending a planning director hearing for LU 11 0041 in large numbers, these residents collectively came away with the impression that our government planner, chairing the hearing, was espousing a bias toward the oil company. Regardless of what a public speaker at the hearing said, it was immediately dismissed by the planner for one reason or another. That's what we perceived. Within a few days of the public hearing, with absolutely no changes to the permit, despite lengthy public objections, the permit was approved. Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas was formed immediately after that experience. The young organization raised some money and filed an appeal of LU 11 0041 to your commission. To our great surprise, fracking was removed from the permit hours prior to the Planning Commission hearing. We also learned that the permit was being issued for nine new wells on the Hearth lease drill pad only, and that the applicant had agreed to get off of Koningstein Road and abandon the wells on the drill pad accessed by that road. Nevertheless, SeaFrog objected to the sparse SEQA review, the proximity to condor critical habitat with no mitigations, and the quantity of oil wells. We lost the appeal to your commission in May of 2013." Shortly after that Planning Commission hearing, SeaFrog volunteers noticed that the permit filed contained a curious anomaly. In 2008, Marata Petroleum had asked for permission to drill a new oil well on the Nesbit lease on CUP 3319. The permit had previously authorized four new oil wells to be drilled on the Nesbit drill pad. None of them were drilled, and the time limit for drilling had expired. Marata now wanted two things, one, to extend the drilling time for this one new well, and two, to drill the well on a new drill pad that had never been approved through a SEQA review. Marata made the location at which they wanted to drill perfectly clear to planning staff. There was nothing nefarious on their part. Planning staff apparently wanted to allow the drilling to proceed, so without any SEQA review, a very strange zoning clearance was issued. You have the zoning clearance. We noticed that the zoning clearance does not authorize drilling a new oil well, as every other zoning clearance we've ever seen says specifically, "Zoning clearance to drill three oil wells, zoning clearance to drill five oil wells, zoning clearance to drill one oil well." Instead, this one says, "Zoning clearance, and the purpose is use inauguration, change of ownership." Dogger accepted this as SEQA clearance for permit to drill Nesbit 5. So, SeaFrog asked Mr. Hessen, who was Division 2 Director of Dogger, "How did this happen? How did you use this zoning clearance to authorize a permit to drill Nesbit 5?" Mr. Hessen said, "I've got to be more careful." So, still in a state of disbelief, SeaFrog went to Mr. Vaca, because we're kind of thinking that drilling an oil well is a pretty serious thing, and told him of our findings. His response was to file a complaint, which SeaFrog did. Shortly thereafter, SeaFrog met with Ms. Pearlheart and Mr. Vaca, and then received the written response letter previously cited. In essence, we were told that Nesbit 5, now Hearth 5, because it was actually drilled on the Hearth lease, would be abandoned, and the site would be restored because our allegations were partially correct. SeaFrog has received confirmation from Dogger that Hearth 5 has been abandoned. So, again, we would not tell this story to your commission today if it were not for a very curious map included in this permit, which shows specifically what facilities are authorized by this permit. Specifically, this permit authorizes, A, the testing, drilling, production, reworking, and maintenance, excluding hydraulic fracturing, of nine proposed oil and gas wells and two existing wells, a total of 11, on the Hearth drilling pad. The location of the wells is shown on Attachment F of the M&amp;D addendum and Planning Director Hearing Exhibit 3. Hearing Exhibit 3 for the March 21, 2013 hearing. Interesting, where's the map? So I looked on the website for the Planning Commission hearing, looked in the staff report, and at Exhibit 3, and it's that map. The location of the wells in Attachment F and in the M&amp;D addendum and the Planning Director Hearing Exhibit for March 21, 2013, both include the same hand-drawn bracket added to a map showing the Hearth Nesbit 5 well as part of the Nesbit drill pad. That was to be abandoned. That isn't permitted. Remember, the Nesbit 5 Hearth 5 well drill pad should never have been authorized because it was drilled in a location that was never part of a CEQA review. That's why we're here. Therefore, the project description is incorrect. Here's the specific reason it doesn't belong in this permit. Ms. McGee's letter to SeaFrog in response to our complaint made this statement regarding the importance of site plans. When a zoning clearance is requested at the planning counter, I understand that doesn't happen anymore, but it goes on to say, "Planning Division staff typically relies upon the site plans, the label 'site plan' for CUP 3319, and the conditions of approval of the applicable CUP." This map is referenced, again, in Section F. "Operation of existing equipment on the Hearth lease associated with the storage, processing, transporting of oil and gas and water," as shown in Attachment F of the addendum to the M&amp;D and Exhibit 3 for the hearing. Another reference to this erroneous map can be found in the staff report, page 4 of 36. SeaFrog simply cannot understand why or how this map, which is the only map in the file that shows the existence of this unauthorized drill pad, was included in this permit to reactivate three oil wells on the Nesbit drill pad. It shouldn't be in the file. It's just an error. For obvious reasons, SeaFrog strenuously objects to the inclusion of Attachment F in this permit. For some reason, rather than including a map depicting the existing permitted equipment on the Nesbit pad in this report, we are once again referred to in Exhibit 4 of a staff report for a Planning Director hearing. Exhibit 4 is the mitigated negative declaration addendum referenced above. This same map has been added to the 1985 mitigated negative declaration. It's the last page. It is once again the map showing the Nesbit Hearth 5 drill pad as part of the approved Nesbit pad. Of course, it can't be part of the 1985 mitigated negative declaration because it clearly depicts a well drilled in 2008. This map did not exist in 1985, and it was never part of that mitigated negative declaration. Prior to any further approval of this project, SeaFrog requests that all references to Attachment F, site planned for CUP 3319 permit area, which clearly shows the unapproved Nesbit 5 Hearth 5 well and drill pad, be entirely deleted from any part of this permit. Now I'm going to move on to the findings in the staff report that the project is in compliance with the noncoastal zoning ordinance, and I will explain why SeaFrog believes that the specific NCZO ordinances have been essentially ignored. The oil and gas development NCZO is not ambiguous. It states clearly that all purposes and provisions of the oil and gas ordinances shall be and hereby are automatically imposed on any or on or made part of any permit for oil and gas development issued by Ventura County on or after March 24, 1983. NCZO, Section 8107, 5.5, 4. "Permittees and operators should share facilities such as, but not limited to, permit areas, drill sites, access roads, storage, production, and processing facilities, and pipelines." The staff report says that sharing is not possible because nearby facilities are owned by other operators. The statement does not accurately represent the conditions on CUP 319 because it implies that the permittee would have to use facilities or pipelines owned by others. The whole of CUP 3319 is operated by Marata Petroleum, South Mountain Resources, and therefore, without any permission from another private operator, it appears Marata could access the Hearth lease area from the Nesbit lease area with a pipeline. Do you have the map? The Nesbit lease area and the Hearth lease area are connected, all on one CUP. They're just separate leases. And gathering pipelines, pipelines within a CUP to go to a centralized processing location are the norm. The pipeline would be beneficial because it would eliminate any oil tanker trucks from the Nesbit lease down Konigstein Road and onto Highway 150. Oil is trucked out of the Hearth lease, as Mr. Goldenring pointed out, from the Hearth lease pad through an oil road, the residents call it Painted Pony, that goes directly to the Hearth lease, and that road is located on a straightaway on Highway 150. There aren't many, but that is a straightaway. That is a safe location for an oil tanker truck to make a turn right or left. So we're not in opposition to all oil tanker trucks all over the world, just the ones that can't be done safely. 8107, 5.5.5 says that a pipeline should be used to transport petroleum products off-site. A pipeline should be used. The staff report says the use of a pipeline is not necessary because there is no significant environmental impact on traffic safety or air quality. While SeaFrog disagrees with both of those findings, the staff report misses the point of the zoning ordinance, which specifically states that the purpose of a pipeline is to promote traffic safety and air quality. Nowhere does it say that there must first be a finding of significant environmental impacts before the ordinance comes into play. The zoning clearance is being misinterpreted. It is SeaFrog's contention that a pipeline must be used for transport of fluids from this project, and if it's not feasible, then the burden falls upon the applicant to demonstrate why that's the case. Next slide. This ordinance says that gas and oil should be piped to a centralized location for collection and processing. It's a great ordinance. The staff report does not offer substantial evidence to support the finding that this ordinance can be disregarded for purposes of this permit. There is no analysis of the cost of a pipeline from the Nesbit lease to the Hearth lease in which there is a centralized collection area and existing processing facilities. If the production from the Hearth lease and the Nesbit lease were considered together, including foreseeable production from the nine new wells permitted on the Hearth lease, there might certainly be more than a justifiable amount of oil production for a pipeline. However, through segmenting this project from the potential environmental impacts of 11 wells on the Hearth pad, proper CEQA review has been avoided. And equally important, the staff, by allowing this permit to go forward with trucking rather than a pipeline, is simply writing the zoning ordinances adopted by the Board of Supervisors and vetted by the public out of existence. What use are the zoning ordinances if planning staff will not even follow their direction without first establishing a finding of environmental significance? Nowhere in the zoning ordinance does it say, "First, conditions of the ordinance before you can look at them." There has to be a CEQA finding of environmental significance, quite the opposite. The oil development guidelines lay out a clear framework within which these ordinances apply. "The general guidelines that follow shall be used in the development of conditions which will help ensure that oil development projects generate minimal negative impacts on the environment. The guidelines shall be applied whenever physically and economically feasible and practicable unless the strict application of a particular guideline would otherwise defeat the intent of the other guidelines. An applicant should use the guidelines in the design of the project and anticipate their use as permit conditions unless the applicant can demonstrate they are not feasible or practicable. The guidelines make it crystal clear that the applicant should use the guidelines in the design of the project and anticipate their use as a permit condition." The applicant did not use the guidelines for oil and gas development in the design of this project. The application submitted by SESP Consulting for Marata does not mention the word "pipeline." Rather, it expressly asks to have the prohibition of the use of Konigstein Road and Highway 150 removed from the existing permit. Once again, the guidelines shall be applied whenever physically and economically feasible and practicable unless the applicant can demonstrate that they are not feasible or practicable. The applicant has not demonstrated either condition that would allow these guidelines to be disregarded. Now as to truck trips, it was nice to hear that the applicant, in his application, said that there would be one truck trip per week. That's not bad. But the conditions of the permit say, "Transport of oil produced at the Hearth lease well site and the Nesbit lease well site will involve no more than two round-trip truck trips per day." Per day. Okay, so it's combined. Some of it's going out of Hearth. How much? How many loads? What would stop them from running trucks two times per day for two months? Three months? Six months? There's nothing in the conditions that says one truck trip per week. So the watershed moment has passed. One truckload per day was just permitted last month to use the intersection. What is the impact of two more truckloads per day? Effectively doubling the impact of the first permit. Without any science to back up the number of truck trips that can be safely executed at the intersection, we don't know. The first permit was premised upon the understanding that one truckload a day was so small. Now there's three per day. Small has to be quantified, not guessed at. The applicant's own transportation report, which I had not seen until it was on the wall this morning, so I'm going to make the representation of what I saw on the wall, said that it would be safe for three trips a day. Well, you know, we're now, three one-way trips, I believe. You could go back and look at it. We're now at two round-trip truck trips, got that one, per day, plus the prior AGNU permit. Condition number 35, which is included in both permits, AGNU and Nesbit, says, "Except under emergency circumstances, as determined by the Planning Director, no more than two tanker trips per day shall be permitted to haul oil and waste products generated from an area under an oil permit through a residential area." Really nice. The Board of Supervisors just last month gave permission for one tanker truck trip a day, and this one permits two. The total of this recently issued permit, by the way, if it's not in the conditions, it doesn't exist. We've been told that before. Needs to be in the permit conditions. So if, in fact, there's going to be one truck every 16 days, or whatever it is, it needs to be in the permit conditions. The total of this recently issued permit and the one before you today, also referred to as cumulative impacts of tanker loads per day, is 3.13. Konigstein Road is a residential area. This permit now allows 3.13 tanker trips per day. Therefore, the permit, when considered with the cumulative traffic on Konigstein Road, is out of compliance with its own conditions. Planning staff may hold the interpretation that Condition 35 applies to this permit and this permit only. To follow that logic, if there were 10 oil and gas permits on this small, short, windy rural road, would 50 tanker trucks be allowed per day without violation of the permit condition? This example demonstrates the dangers of looking at each permit in a vacuum. This is why CEQA requires that projects be considered in a setting that is larger than the boundaries at hand. CEQA requires a cumulative review in order to protect the environment to the fullest extent. This permit is not in compliance with Condition 35. Now the issue of compliance monitoring. Staff made a finding that compliance monitoring was not required for this permit because there were no findings of environmental significance that were great enough to require it. This is a report from a Ventura County compliance coordinator who conducted a compliance review of this very permit in 2010. "In spite of the undisputed fact that the permittee was using the intersection of Konigstein Road and Highway 150 to haul oil out of the permit area in violation of the current permit conditions, the compliance coordinator found that the operator was in full compliance with all permit conditions. The officer evidently did not even ask the applicant how the oil was being transported from the location. At the Board of Supervisors hearing, a resident said, 'I did not know that I am responsible for monitoring the operator for compliance.'" Planning staff has said that they have had no complaints regarding truck traffic on Konigstein Road, thus they did not know what access route was being used. The resident pointed out, "The compliance isn't her job. Rather, it's the job of the county." So this permit must include conditions that specify how the truck trips will be monitored, by whom, and how often. The results of the monitoring must be disseminated to residents in the neighborhood so that they can have some assurance that, once again, the responsibility for permit monitoring is not following upon their shoulders. The safe alternative to trucking is that there could simply be a pipeline on the CUP, not impacting any roads or highways that would connect the Nesbit drill pad to the Hearth drill pad where oil is trucked to market on the main oil road connecting to Highway 150 used by multiple oil companies working in the area, where visibility and access are much safer for oil tanker trucks. In conclusion, SeaFrog respectfully asks that you grant our appeal and ask the planning staff to correct the errors made in the references to Attachment F and in the inclusion of the same map in the old M&amp;D of 1985. Now Mr. Brooks will conclude our presentation. Any questions?
Hold on just a second. Let me see if there's any questions to the speaker. Are there any questions? Before you go on, can I have staff respond to two things in my notes?
Sure. Can I sit down, or do you want me up?
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure, go ahead. There were two issues raised that I was wondering if the planning staff could re-go over them. That's the request about Attachment F on the Hearth Nesbit Number 5 Drill Pad lease, or Drill Pad, rather. And then also, Slide number 13 regarding this NCZO, Section 8107, etc. So two things.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, regarding Attachment F, that is the site plan for that your commission saw and approved as part of the LU 11 0041 permit, and the condition and that the permit you granted said you can drill nine new wells on the Hearth drilling pad. That map has the name Hearth Drilling That map has the name Hearth Drilling Pad with an arrow going to the drilling pad that's there, not to the arrow to the Nesbit Five Drilling Pad, which is considered one of the Nesbit things. So, it's specific in Attachment F. There's no problem with that map. And if you, as a matter of information, we show a map and there's a well on the map, we show where the Nesbit Five is because we knew it was there. That's not part of the permit that is before you or the permit that was in front of you in 2013. There's no confusion about where the nine wells are supposed to be. If you wish, as part of this action, we can put a large X through the Nesbit Five Site and with the words "Site Abandoned," because that's the status that we're at now. Nesbit Five is abandoned, the site's been regraded and restored and revegetated. So, there is no drilling pad at Nesbit Five. And so, and the other Holly, Richard Holly, and I congratulate him, he was the one who first brought to our attention that Nesbit Five appeared to be out in left field and not where it should have been drilled. And we readily admitted that he was correct. But we can't help what happened by our predecessors sixteen years earlier. In terms of, let's see, what was the other thing?
It was NCZO Section Eight, yeah.
There are two sections of the oil development regulations that were adopted by the county. One are called the Oil Development Guidelines, and the second section is called the Oil Development Standards. The guidelines are just those guidelines. That's things that you should do if you can, if they're economically feasible and practicable. The Oil Development Standards are things you must do. And so, the Oil Development Standards appear in your conditions of approval. They're referenced and they're part of the conditions of approval, the requirements of the Oil Development Standards. That includes the Site Restoration Standard that we employed to have the Nesbit Five Site abandoned. The guidelines talk about things like, "It'd be great if we could consolidate facilities. It would be good that if it's economically practicable and feasible to operate a facility by pipeline, you can, or you should." And there's an analysis of those guidelines in Exhibit Eight, I believe, of your staff report. We have a whole analysis about the feasibility of serving this site with a pipeline. Now, the production from this site is seven, around seven barrels of fluid per day, half of which is oil, when it was last on production. That's a very low-producing site. And there is an economic analysis in your Exhibit Eight which shows it's just not feasible to operate it by pipeline. On top of that, the concept of operating by pipeline is generally where you connect to a common carrier line that the fluid can be transported by pipeline to its receiver location, which ultimately, with the Crimson Pipeline System, is the refineries in Wilmington. There is no common carrier line within a couple of miles of this site. And the Hearth, the facilities at the Hearth Lease are down on the bottom of a canyon, and there's a big cliff in between the Nesbit Site and the Hearth Site. So, that'd be quite an engineering feat to drop a pipeline down that hill, which is simply not justified by three barrels a day of oil production. So, those are guidelines. These are things we attempt to do. Where, in the Ferndale case, that was before your commission last year, they do have consolidated facilities there. They have seventeen wells operating, and the fluid is shipped across Santa Paula Creek in a pipeline over to consolidated facilities at the Hamp Lease. So, where it's feasible and practicable, the county requires, and it has happened, that facilities are combined. But it's not a mandate. There was one other thing. I'd just like to point out that in the original permits in this area, like from Marata Agnew, the planning commission at that time and the board, they had put a condition of approval in there that if oil production got to 350 barrels of oil per day, you could no longer truck. You had to operate by pipeline. And so, there was an assessment at that time that pipelines are really required when you get over 350 barrels of oil a day. Well, that amount of production was never achieved by all of the wells on the Konigstein Road combined, ever. The average production in that area total has been at sixty-nine barrels a day. So, that's the issue of pipeline. I want to clear up any remaining confusion about truck trips. And I would have to tell you that I've reviewed hundreds of comments, approaching 500 comments provided by the Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas. That one comment by Carol Holly was the comment that did change the permit and was a good comment. And that was that you haven't differentiated the number of truck trips associated with the Hearth Lease, which has a separate access to 150, versus the Nesbit Lease. In response to Ms. Holly's comment, we've altered the conditions of approval, and we talked to the applicant, and they clearly don't need twelve truckloads a week for the Nesbit Lease. And what is going to be the split, and we have it mandated. And in Page Three of Thirty-Eight, which I guess in your packet is Page Three Eighteen, but this is Condition of Approval One, and I'll just read directly. "Transport of produced fluids from the Nesbit Lease shall be limited to one truckload of fluid per week, i.e. two one-way trips per week, Monday through Friday." And so, the three one-way trips per week that the transportation report and the Transportation Department looked at involves 2.3 one-way trips per day for the Marata Agnew Project, and that is eight truckloads a week divided by seven. And you work out the math, it's 2.3 one-way truck trips for Marata Agnew. This project, one truck trip per week divided by seven, that's two one-way truck trips divided by seven, equals 0.29 one-way truck trips per day. 0.29 plus 2.3 equals 2.59 one-way truck trips per day total, maximum by the combined Marata Agnew and Marata-Nesbit. So, it is less than three one-way trips per day. So, it's very specific.
And that's an average?
That is a maximum, not an average.
Okay.
As Mr. Goldenring and Mr. Scott, or Mr. Price, they're very optimistic about getting one truck trip a week out of Nesbit, when that hasn't occurred basically forever, for a long time.
Okay. Before we go on to the next speaker, I just want a show of hands. Have you moved your car so you won't get ticketed at 11:30? Everybody's good, so I don't need to take a break? Okay. Mr. Brooks, John Brooks, is the next speaker.
Can we have a senior citizens' break? Thank you for enduring all of this. It's a...
What are you saying? Are you implying something?
No, me, for me. I'm okay. Thank you. I am John Brooks. I'm president of Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas. I live in Oakview. I've lived in the Ojai Valley for more than forty years. Thank you for listening to Carol Holly's explain her meticulous research. I'm sure you were impressed, as I was. But really, this application for LU-150060 cannot go forward until the issues she identified are corrected. And I did not hear Mr. Baca explain how Attachment F got into the 1985 case file when the well was drilled in 2000 or whenever. My remarks, however, are directed at a meeting that preceded the application for the CUP, and it laid the groundwork for today's hearing and all that has followed, and it was not disclosed to the commission or the public. The meeting was held, we believe, in or about March of 2011. But a public records request that I submitted to Mr. Baca produced no written documentation of the conversations that were at that meeting. When the newly formed SeaFrog came to you concerning those wells three years ago in 2013, shortly after my retirement from CBS News, I was thrilled, and now I see extremely naive, when the attorney for Marata Petroleum informed the commission that in exchange for your approval of nine new wells on the Hearth Lease, they would immediately abandon the Nesbit Wells and get the tankers off Konigstein Road. That statement was repeated several times by your own staff, and it had the effect of blocking further public complaints concerning the long-term illegal use of the road and intersection. And the abandonment claim cleared the way for your approval of that CUP. Let's see and hear exactly what was said to you during that hearing three years ago. And if I may have the video from the gentleman upstairs. There is a video.
Well, what is the outstanding violation at this site? In 1995, it rained, and the access road that leads from another oil field to the west and leads to an upper section of Konigstein Road, which was the approved access for the Nesbit Lease, washed out. And so, since that time, in order to access their oil field, they've been turning off of Highway 150 and going up Konigstein Road, including the segment that they were not allowed to do under CUP 3319. Well, that's a physical fact. That's what's been happening. We, that would be me and Jay and Ms. Prilhart, were unaware of that until they came in for their application. And so, the choice was, as we saw, to bring the situation back into compliance, either modify your permit to go up Konigstein Road or get off of Konigstein Road.
We have private access from the Hearth out to Highway 150. All the talk about Konigstein is difficult to talk about at all, simply because we're not going to be using Konigstein. We're closing off the top half, getting rid of the wells on the top half so that the Konigstein issue doesn't come up. If this application is approved, then we will start, we'll shut in the wells and begin the process for plugging and abandoning. First ninety days, they're idled. That means no more traffic period after that first ninety-day period because your wells are idled, they're not producing. After that, we have a period of time within which to plug and abandon and get everything off.
In any case, the permit that's in front of you is to abandon the facilities over there and get off of that area and not use that easement for oil production purposes.
Anybody watch the Vice President last night at the convention? He said, he used a word that I'd like to use after watching that, malarkey.
Well, what is the outstanding violation at this site?
Just once is all we need.
In 1995, it rained.
He's running it again. Just one time, thank you. Anyways, malarkey. Marata's attorney, Kate Nieswender, said, quote, "We're not going to be using Konigstein Road. We're closing off the top half, getting rid of the wells on the top half, so that the Konigstein Road issue doesn't come up." But wait a minute. As Mr. Baca pointed out, there could be a modification of that. Don't they have the right to modify and change their mind? Well, they didn't change their mind. They always knew they would come back. And how do I know that? Well, thanks to the transcripts of a sworn deposition that Mr. Baca gave in a lawsuit filed by Marata to establish an easement across the private property to access Konigstein Road, we now know that Marata told the planning department they were going to sue and later restart. Now, what I don't know for certain, because there's no record of the conversation, is whether they were told at the same time that the Board of Supervisors' safety ban against using Highway 150 Konigstein Road would not be a problem in the future. But wouldn't that be a bigger obstacle than getting an easement? According to the deposition, those present at the meeting before the application was filed were Mr. Baca, Ms. Prilhart, Ms. Nieswender, Scott Price, and maybe Ms. Moncrief. The attorney for the property owner, William Slaughter, asked Mr. Baca in this deposition, "Did you discuss the abandonment of Nesbit Wells might be temporary?" And he said it was part of the discussion on structuring the CUP, since Marata could not demonstrate legal access to the Nesbit Site. Mr. Slaughter continues, quote, "And so, you were advised, I presume, Ms. Nieswender, that they were contemplating litigation in order to prove up some sort of easement." Mr. Baca replied, quote, "Well, the conversation included plots such as prescriptive easement, but although thoughts of searching through various records to find easements that had not yet been found," end quote. So, all of this that has happened has been discussed and planned in advance. You, the planning commission, and we, the citizens, were never told there was an easement problem. The only reason we were given, and you were given, and the public, was to get off Konigstein Road because it violated the terms of the CUP. In the video you just saw, Mr. Baca told you, quote, "In any case, the permit that's in front of you is to abandon the facilities over there and get off that area and not use that easement for oil production purposes." Yet, in his deposition, he said he'd already been told that Marata planned to sue to obtain the easement. His sworn testimony is available right here in its entirety, if you choose to read it. Now, why would Marata vigorously seek an easement if they thought Konigstein Road's safety ban on tankers would still be in effect? Keep in mind, this meeting that Mr. Baca talks about was five years ago. It was held before any of the various parties, the public, Caltrans, traffic engineers, had weighed in with either support or objection to such a reclassification. Now, I ask you, is that fair? Were the comments that we sent in in support of continued safety regulation from respected traffic engineers, architects, air quality scientists, were they evaluated on their merits? Or were they dismissed because they did not fit into this previous plan? I ask you that. And I'm suspicious. I'm sorry, I'm suspicious. The EIR of 1983 determined that the intersection of Konigstein Road and Highway 150 was too dangerous for large oil trucks, period. There was no equivocation in that ruling by the Board of Supervisors. It said the turns the tankers take could cause accidents, and you saw it in the video. Each turn goes into the opposing lane of Konigstein Road. You know that. That's not safe, even if they don't swerve over the W O lines on Highway 150. They're creating a dangerous situation to all the residents up there and anyone who drives Konigstein Road on a daily basis, including school buses. It should be up to the applicant to disprove that finding, including turning radio, the whole ballgame that a traffic engineer would provide. We're not invited into private meetings to discuss with the planning department a better strategy to be able to convince you that our scientific objections should be honored. We don't get that kind of treatment. We come to you in good faith, and we speak the truth as best we know it, without a hidden agenda. So, what happened? Almost as soon as you approved the split or segmentation of the Nesbit Wells from the Hearth Wells and gave the go-ahead for drilling nine new wells, Marata filed a lawsuit to establish its right to drive those tankers again toward Konigstein Road. This was immediately after your decision. And now, they want to reactivate the three old Nesbit Wells in addition to the three Agnew Wells on the same road that were recently approved by the Board of Supervisors. No study has been done on the cumulative impact of those two projects. Our lawyers believe that alone is a SEQA violation. Also, segmentation is a SEQA violation. You can correct it. You have the obligation to do so. Here's what we're asking you to do. First of all, and I added this one, tell the public, will you, if an applicant is spouting malarkey and you know it, order a traffic study by the licensed traffic engineer outside of the Transportation Department to determine if the intersection could be safely used by oil tanker trucks. Send this Nesbit project back for a new SEIR that considers the whole CUP as well as the Agnew lease permit in its evaluation of all areas of SEQA. Require the applicant to provide a thorough study of mitigation, such as a pipeline from the Hearth Lease to the Nesbit Lease, so that oil and gas can be shipped via pipeline from the Hearth Lease or trucked out from the Hearth Lease when an existing oil road is in use by Marata that has a much safer entrance. Tell the planning staff to correct the errors, including but not limited to the inclusion of Attachment F. And finally, tell the staff to follow your own general plan with SEQA air quality studies that consider the five-pound level of significance for RLC emissions and that does not arbitrarily eliminate oil wells from SEQA review. We'll be available to answer any questions you have, and I thank you for your time.
Are there any questions to the speaker? Thank you very much. Would it be appropriate to, at this point, because the point was made, to have Mr. Thomas come down and explain this, our rules for air quality emissions analysis? Not that there's been a specific thing, but, you know, we're dancing around this issue. So, if you could explain it again, and I'm sorry that you've...
Okay, I'm Chuck Thomas, planning manager of the Air Pollution Control District.
Aye.
You're gonna have to refresh my memory as to what your question might be.
Well, I think that what SeaFrog's position is, and if I misstate it, feel free to jump up, is that there's been an improper segmentation of these related projects, in their view, and that by segmenting it, SEQA hasn't been followed, and that there would be a significant air quality impact if they were all considered together.
No, there has been no segmentation. These projects are being handled the way every other project in the county by not only the county Ventura, but the cities and other lead agencies handle. County of Ventura, but the cities and other lead agencies handle projects. They are separate projects, they are not combined projects. The five pounds per day in the Ojai Valley is the strictest CEQA air quality threshold in the state of California. It's been in place since at least 2003, adopted through, by us, through the Air Pollution Control Board, adopted by the County of Ventura for their ISAGs, through, by the County Board of Supervisors. The Agnu and the Nesbit and the others in the area are separate projects, and they are looked at separately unless they are in some way combined through some other action. So, there has been no segmentation.
For purposes of discussion, if the argument is accepted that these two projects really are one project, would there be a significant impact, would that five trigger be met?
You're speaking about the Agnu and the Nesbit?
Correct.
No, because the Agnu project's already been approved. This is a separate project.
Right. If, for purposes of discussion, in 2013, if the commission had known that really this was all one project, that is the argument that is being proposed, would we rise to a level of significance on the air quality impacts if you take in combination this project and the 2013 project?
Oh, and just for clarification, when you're saying that the 2013 project, you're referring to the hearth lease, right? So, you're looking at hearth and Nesbit, as opposed to Agnu and Nesbit.
Okay, I'm looking over, because actually, I'm not sure.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, in 2013, you looked at the current permit that is being requested to be modified, and that's LU 110041, that includes the hearth and the Nesbit leases. In 2015, your commission looked at the Marata-Agnu.
Not the 2015, I'm simply talking about the 2013 for purposes of argument. Not that I'm accepting the argument, I am just asking if, in 2013, those two leases were combined, would we reach a significant level in air quality impact?
I'm not quite sure what was proposed in 2013.
Madam Chair, the LU 110041 project involved the abandonment of the Nesbit-lease facilities and drilling nine new wells on the hearth lease.
Right.
The nine new wells was originally going to be the proposal for the entirety of the two leases, and they were concentrated on the hearth lease since there was no access to the other one. So, the impact would be identical, even if the abandonment of the hearth lease, or Nesbit lease, had not been included, it would have been the same. It was a proposal to drill nine new wells, and the other wells are all existing.
I don't, I must not be doing a very good job of explaining my question. What I'm trying to do is ask, from SeaFrog's point of view, and if I'm misstating it or if I'm garbling it up or something, what I'm trying to find out is the nine plus these two, really, would that trigger the five?
If there were nine new wells, brand-new wells that hadn't been permitted before, that were brand-new, that had never been in any baseline, yes.
No, they don't, they would have exceeded, in terms of two pounds per day of rock, but then again, they don't apply to the threshold, so it would not have been a significant impact.
Well, that's true. What I missed, what I missed is that air permits are ministerially approved.
Okay, and we did that...
They are approved by the APCD as ministerial permits. Ministerial permits are not counted toward the CEQA threshold per our guidelines and subsequently adopted by the County ISAG, because they are ministerial.
And I recall your explanation.
And they are mitigated through our permit program.
Yes, and I understand.
Actually, Mr. Baca talked about emission offsets and how larger companies provide more emission offsets than smaller companies, and that makes up, but there's more to it than that. The two pounds per day, by many, many years, was established prior to many of the rules that we now apply to oil facilities. For example, we now have, and have for a number of years, a rule that requires the operator to periodically inspect their facility for fugitive emission leaks, I think it's quarterly. And we, our inspectors, go out once a year and inspect every oil facility for fugitive leaks. The two pounds per day does not take into account the emission benefits of that program. So, the two pounds per day, probably from our studies, or studies done by Santa Barbara APCD, overestimates the actual emissions coming from there. But we've stuck with the two pounds per day because it's more conservative and more protective of the environment. So, the emissions actually are probably overstated. But we don't count that when we do the CEQA analysis. We stick with the longstanding two pounds per day.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Mr. Thomas? Yes. Okay. Are there any other questions of the, okay. Thank you very much for your explanation again, and then Commissioner Anstott.
Mr. Baca, I'd like you to respond to the allegations that, and I don't really know that I, maybe I'm in a fog, it's 11:30 and I need something to eat, but I was trying to follow the discussion regarding misrepresentations which were made by council that somehow affected or impacted our decision on either one or more of the previous matters in front of us. I'm confused as to what he was talking about, but in essence, the representation that Nesbit was going to be terminated, all of it, and that somehow influenced our decision. I don't quite remember it that way, but could you elaborate on this sort of conspiracy theory?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Anstott, you know, whatever conspiracy there was, I'm a conspirator. This was, we had a meeting, and Mr. Brooks asked for, in a Public Records Act request, asked for whatever we had on the meeting, and I had vaguely remembered it, and I sent him everything we had. The meeting took place November 1st of 2012. Remember, you reviewed the project later in 2013. And the issue came up in our review of the project, and it sort of standard, demonstrate to us that you have access. And of course, you know, we were aware of this complaint, that they didn't have access through the Ratcliffe Rainwater Property. And we asked their counsel at the time, Kate Nieswender, well, do you have documentation that you have access? And the answer was no, they didn't. And then, they asked us, well, can we just split the hearth and the Nesbit leases into separate CUPs? And we said, no, because to grant you a modified CUP for a Nesbit, you'd have to have access. So, you can't do that. So, it's still one unified CUP. And they said, well, we still want to have permission to drill some wells. Well, we said, and I said it earlier, we said, well, the only permit, modified permit we can grant you is one that involves abandonment of the facilities for which you don't have legal access. And so, hence, condition of approval 27 appeared. There was nothing weird and unexplained and nothing unusual. We have meetings with applicants and other agencies all the time, without them being a publicly noticed meeting and inviting people who may or may not be an opponent of the project. At the time that you had the meeting, unfortunately, I noticed that I've lost hair since 2013, and I don't have much left to go. But at the time, you know, Ms. Nieswender had expressed that, well, you know, we may file an action to try to get an easement here. And I said, well, that's none of our business. For us, you don't have authority to do that. And of course, you also, there's no prohibition at any time for anyone for filing, you know, petitioning their government and asking the question and receiving due process. So, subsequent to that, they availed themselves of legal rights, then they provided documentation that we ran by county council. Yes, they do have legal access, and they would like to do a modification of the permit. And here we are today. This is nothing unusual. But at the time that we're on the videotape there, we had no knowledge that they were going to be successful in obtaining access, because they looked high and low and couldn't come up with any legal access at that time. So, there was nothing weird and unusual here.
Thank you, sir.
And when you said, "That's none of our business," could you explain that more thoroughly? Because my recollection is that, is that, at least I was aware, that they were going to seek, with Marion Ratcliffe, access across her property. So, what do you mean, "That's none of our business"? Could you explain more thoroughly what the county's business is?
Well, the business is the discretionary action in front of us, and we don't get into private civil matters between private people. And we didn't want to know then, and I didn't want to know when I was deposed, and I didn't want to know when I was scheduled for a court appearance. But, you know, we don't get involved in private civil matters. Our job is to review the project in front of us, provide records when someone provides a Public Records Act request, and when you're subpoenaed through the court to appear and testify, we do so.
Yeah, it just has to do with the limits on what our power is and what, it's not that we don't care or we don't want to know, it's just what the limits of our purview are. And I was aware that they were seeking it, but that is not something, as a planning commissioner, that we have any kind of influence, any kind of power over, et cetera. So, moving on to the next speaker.
May I make a comment?
Certainly.
I don't know that I have any recollection in hearing staff's testimony back in 2013 on this issue related to abandoning the three wells and consolidating the hearth issue. Receiving any information of conversation between staff and the applicant, that the avenue that was, the recommended action in front of us certainly excluded the three wells on the Nesbit property. I was led to believe that there was no intent to pursue activation or reactivation of those three wells at any time in the future. Therefore, the Konigstein Road issue was a non-issue as related to what was in front of us at that time, and I think that's correct. But I'm left with the feeling that there wasn't full disclosure by staff to this commission, because it sounds like, as I interpret what you're saying, there was conversation by applicant's attorney and staff that they would, yes, they don't have entitlement to easement on the private property, but it was their intent to gain it. Yes, Mr. Baca did not know and does not want to get involved in litigation, or recommendation of litigation, as it relates to a recommendation to this commission. But it seems like staff was made aware that that was their intent. Let's get this one resolved and get this one in the can, if you will, i.e., 2013 issue, and we'll proceed, or they would proceed on a separate matter with the three wells we're talking about here and the access to Konigstein Road. But what difference would it made had you known?
I don't know, I just appreciate disclosure.
Oh, I appreciate that, too.
It could have made a difference.
Yeah. I don't...
Maybe we can have, maybe we can have this discussion during deliberations?
Okay.
Sure.
I'd like to hear from the rest of the speakers, and then...
Have lunch.
How are we doing? Are we, are we ready to go forward? Margot Griswold?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Margot Griswold, a citizen, speaking as a resident of Konigstein Road. I guess we have to say how long we've been there, because that seems to carry weight. I haven't been there that long, just since 2003. I support the recommendations by SeaFrog. I think they're not unreasonable to ask, given that the county admits to errors in the past. I think many times, the planning commission doesn't consider the private property rights of residents. It's always about business. It's always about making a profit. And oh, yes, it's a local business. And wasn't that a local business at Mission Rock Road, where two years ago, we had quite an explosion, some of which was probably fluids from mining oil from our local areas? Just because you're a local business doesn't mean, de facto, you're going to follow all the rules. We see that. Who is overseeing this? We see you've had evidence presented that the county doesn't follow up on the conditions of CUPs adequately. They were using Konigstein Road for years without proper permit. There are reasons why Konigstein wasn't allowed in the original CUP for the Agnu lease. And I would say, one of my neighbors had to leave, Charlotte Schmid. She has had to back up when an oil truck is turning onto Konigstein, because the truck crosses, as Commissioner Rodriguez obviously saw, and I think you all saw that, has to cross over. If they're not going to cross over the double yellow line of 150, they have to cross over the yellow line on Konigstein. It's a fact. I have to slow down when I'm making that turn, right-hand turn onto Konigstein, so much it always annoys the people behind me. I give very adequate turning. I'm going to turn because I know how that juts up and how I have to make that turn, and I have to be slow about it. There's children on that road, the signs worn, and all the residents obey. I've heard there've been no accidents, but it does only take one. And we have increased traffic over the years. They want to cite back to 30 years ago. Well, there's a lot more traffic, there's more homes, I know, in the area, just since I've been there. So, all in all, I think it's reasonable to make the recommendations made by SeaFrog, and I think their examples are very good. I think there's, I might add that I am a consultant, restoration ecologist, for the last 25 years in Southern California, in the whole state of California. I worked for many transportation organizations, as well as energy companies. And to glibly say, you've already restored an oil pad in a few years, I take exception to that. And I think the county has been a little, giving a short shrift, not taking it seriously. Is the county council ready to say that if there's an accident there, or a big oil spill into Caesar Creek, is the county going to cover that? I want to know as a taxpayer. So, I'm paying my taxes, my road is being used, and I might say, as always, the yellow lines are being replaced constantly because of the excess truck traffic there now. I think you need, you owe it to us as citizens to examine carefully the recommendations by SeaFrog. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Like Carol, I'm an ordinary citizen who lives on Konigstein. Like Carol, I'm an ordinary citizen who's, who lives on Coningstein, and I appreciate the fact that your commission is protecting my interests. As, as you all know, we've heard many times, sometime in the last century, the Board of Supervisors determined that no oil traffic should be allowed on Coningstein larger than a three-quarter ton truck. It was in full awareness of this that I bought property on Coningstein in 2004. Other, other owners were similarly aware that oil traffic was banned on Coningstein. Subsequently, we all discovered in various ways that in fact Marada had been, and its predecessor oil company, had been illegally using Coningstein for something like 20 years. We now have a situation with a modification of the Agnew and the Nesbit leases where Marada is attempting to have the county approve the use of Coningstein for all oil tankers required to service these two leases. At the same time, we have two videos, one of which shows a, if you, if you recall, the last video showed the oil tanker clearly crossing the yellow lines on the 150 and, and making a reasonably legal turn into Coningstein. In response to that, we now, it's almost laughable. We now have another video which shows an old tanker truck with its driver carefully schooled not to go over the yellow lines on 150, but clearly going almost totally into the oncoming traffic lane on Coningstein. So, clearly, there's danger whichever way you approach it. And I think historically it's quite clear that tanker truck drivers tend to prefer to, to pull out over the double yellow lines on, on the 150, which actually, even though I'm a resident of Coningstein Road and I drive down Coningstein Road two or three times a day, going over the yellow lines on the 150 is considerably more dangerous because of the downhill traffic coming the other way. And we saw that with the white truck, the, you know, the notorious white truck video, which for some reason was not shown this time. Probably wisely on behalf, behalf, in terms of the county. So, it's quite clear that pipelines could resolve both these issues. We discussed last time, and we discussed at the Board of Supervisors, that it is quite plausible to put a pipeline from the Agnew down to the 150, and we've heard today that it's equally plausible to run a pipeline from the Nesbit leases down to the Harth lease storage facilities and thereby truck it out through the Painted Pony Route. Again, you know, I, I'm fully aware that there's oil act, and have been for many, many years. I'm fully aware that there's oil activity in Upper Ohio. We don't, I don't personally object to oil activity. I do require that my interests as a homeowner and a resident of Coningstein Road on a road that has been declared unsafe to oil traffic some 30 or 40 years ago by the Board of Supervisors, I demand that my, those interests be considered. My other issue obviously is air quality, and I just want to make, briefly make the point that the APCD offset program doesn't actually benefit residents on Coningstein. Right, whatever mitigations occur in Port Wainimi or in Thousand Oaks don't actually help residents on that road. And their, their situation, or my situation, is aggravated because of the presence of oil speak. So we already have very high NOCs and rocks levels in that area, and I would think it's totally unreasonable that we should attempt to increase them by not counting the output of the local wells. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions to the speaker? Thank you. Can I just follow up on an issue that he raised with county council? So, I believe he stated that he relied on the prohibition on the traffic on Coningstein from the oil, old oil CUPs. What's the recourse for citizens, given that there was a prohibition on it before? They, you know, they were doing their due diligence buying their property. What is their recourse?
So he said he, he relied on that, that CUP when he bought his house?
I, I believe that's what he, I believe so.
Okay. Well, I mean, if, if that's the case, then I would say that it was unreasonable for him to do that for the reason that Mr. Baca stated, that any CUP can be modified at any time, and it's up to the, the permee to, to make the request. And us at the county, we, we process it and we look at the issues and, and the CUP can change. It's, it's not set in stone. And so if someone verbally represented to him that, no, there'll never be oil drilling on the Nesbit lease ever again, then he could have a civil claim against maybe the person who sold his house or real estate agent. But again, that's a separate matter, a separate civil matter.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Could I clarify, could I repeat just briefly?
With the commission's permission, could we recall Mr. Davis? Go ahead. I, I might have mangled what, I was trying to follow up on your concern.
Well, you know, I appreciate council's clarification, but the, the, the simple issue was that the representation that was made to us was that oil traffic on Coningstein was limited to three-quarter ton, which is, which was the case and had been even at the time that we purchased the property for, since, I think it was in the late 70s at the Board of Supervisors, 83. 83, the Board of Supervisors made that determination. So, it may not have been set in stone, but it was very longstanding ban. And we were not aware, and apparently the county was not aware, that this, this particular prohibition had been flagrantly violated by the oil companies, both by Marada and the predecessor, predecessor oil companies. And it was only slowly that we became aware of the fact that there was oil traffic on the road. And in terms of making complaints, I have email record of notifying the county that there were oil trucks on Coningstein. And I subsequently understood that I needed to pursue a formal complaint procedure, which apparently I hadn't done, which is why my so-called complaint didn't count. Thank you.
I see. Thank you. Next speaker is Jeff. I always mess up your name. Kuiper?
You got it right. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And I've, I'm working remotely today, so I have my notes on my phone. I'm not playing that video game that everyone's playing right now, so just, just wanted to clarify, there's no Pokemon going on here. My name is Jeff Kuiper. I'm the executive director of Los Padres Forest Watch, and we do have concerns about this project. We've shared them throughout the, the process, and I'll, I'll briefly go over those today. This operation is of interest to us because it is surrounded on three sides by the Los Padres National Forest and the two routes that have been used to access this drilling site. Both of those routes do cross national forest land. We submitted comments prior to the planning director's hearing along with the Center for Biological Diversity, who could not be here today, and I've been authorized to speak on their behalf as, as well in their absence. So, throughout this process, as I said, we've expressed our concerns. We requested right away, as soon as we heard this project was coming down the pipeline, we requested that we be placed on the, the public notice list for this project. We submitted comments, as I previously mentioned, to the planning director in, in advance of the, the planning director's hearing, yet we were not notified of the planning director's decision, and we did not learn about it until well after the 10-day appeal period and the, the 10-day appeal deadline. This came as a surprise to us because we've been involved in several oil and gas issues within the last few years, as you very well know. And we were actively involved in this project throughout, throughout the process. This project is directly adjacent, as I said, to the Los Padres National Forest, and one of the main issues brought up during the planning director approval process was the lack of permitted access across either of the routes. As I said before, there's two routes leading to this drill site, both cross U.S. Forest Service land. And it's simply unfathomable how we could have been excluded from this process, knowing how involved we, we tend to get and how interested we are in oil drilling issues in this county as they pertain to the Los Padres National Forest. County staff and we may not agree on everything, but we at least deserve the courtesy of, of receiving notification of projects that we may be interested and especially ones that we specifically request notification for. It's safe to say that there's some trust issues between county staff and citizen groups. And actions like these, where organizations take time to review county documents and provide thoughtful comments, thoughtful suggestions, only to be excluded from the process do not move us closer to a place where we can all start working together and, and building that trust. So in light of this, we're here today just to provide brief comments. We're not here as appellants for this reason. The first point I, I do want to bring up is our initial comments pointed out that the two routes accessing this property, one from the south and the other Coningstein Road coming from the west, each of these routes do cross National Forest Service land. The company has been using these routes for years without any permit, without any right-of-way issued by or authorized by the U.S. Forest Service. And to address this comment and a similar one submitted by the U.S. Forest Service during the, the planning director hearing process, the planning division included condition 53 as part of the, the new permit issuance. And that, that condition states, and I'm quoting, "Prior to the issuance of the zoning clearance for use inauguration, the permee shall obtain a special use permit or other written authorization from the U.S. Forest Service that would allow the permee to utilize the federally owned portion of La Brosche Canyon Road for the transport of produced fluids from the Nesbit lease and for access to the lease for maintenance and, and other operational purposes." End quote. So we would like to see, this does address part of our concern, but we would, would like to see the language "other written authorization" stricken from this permit condition. As outlined in the Forest Service letter, the only proper channel to authorize road construction, road use, road maintenance on national forest land is a special use permit. This is important because the Forest Service has its own procedures in place for applying for a special use permit, for reviewing the application, for notifying the public, for conducting the environmental review, and for approving the authorization of special use permits. There's no other method in place to authorize or approve uses like these on national forest land outside of the special use permit process.
Could you, could you repeat the language that you're requesting? Other what?
Yeah, so it's, it's in condition 53, and it's "other written authorization." So it, it requires the applicant to obtain a special use permit or other written authorization. There's, there's absolutely no need to have that, that "other written authorization" language in that permit condition.
So you would like that, you would like that removed?
Correct.
Okay.
The proposed permit condition language as it stands right now encourages the applicant to circumvent the, the normal process to obtain a special use permit by seeking other written authorization outside of the normal public process, and we don't think that's appropriate. In addition, SEQA encourages joint review and environmental documentation for projects like this which cross over local and federal jurisdictions. This joint process is designed to reduce redundancy and ensure collaboration amongst agencies that have varying and sometimes conflicting mandates and missions and, and rules and regulations. So while the road already exists, it was constructed without a, a Forest Service permit several decades ago. The Forest Service through its own process will evaluate the environmental impacts of the road use, its maintenance, and the operation of the whole facility as part of that process as well. And under the National Environmental Policy Act, which is the federal counterpart to SEQA, some minor projects are excluded from environmental review, but this would not fall under any, any of those categories that are excluded from the normal environmental review process under federal law. So an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement would, would need to be prepared by the Forest Service in order for this special use permit to be granted. And it's important that these processes, both federal and local, take place concurrently with both agencies collaborating and agreeing on permit conditions, on environmental review. What we have going on right now is this localized process going on first, and then it will bounce over to federal, will do this, the same process all over again. They don't have public hearings, but there is, is opportunities for public comment and review. And the outcomes from that process may differ from this process. So that's why both NEPA and SEQA really encourage both agencies, federal and local, coming together for situations just like this which, which span jurisdictions. My other point, and then I'll conclude. We do remain seriously concerned with the applicant's non-compliance with the terms of the current permit. Condition 27 of the current permit requires Marada to abandon and remove the three wells, two tanks, and associated equipment from the site by June 2015. This condition was imposed to consolidate the operation and reduce its environmental footprint. It's unclear why the applicant is now seeking to reactivate these wells that it agreed to abandon just a few short years ago, and, and why the county is, uh, uh, Planning Division is, is backing off from that, that permit condition that required abandonment of this facility to, to consolidate the operation. It's equally perplexing why county planning accepted this application and issued this new permit when the applicant is currently in violation of the terms and conditions of its existing permit pertaining to abandonment of this facility. And as you know, provision in the, the non-coastal zoning ordinance does not allow the county to accept and process an application if there are existing violations of the terms and conditions of the existing permit. So in conclusion, thank you for your consideration of these issues and for your service to our community. I'm available for questions, and, and thanks again.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the speaker? I do, I want to make sure, I think I zoned out from 12:05 to 12:07, and I missed something. I have condition 53, condition 27, and there was something in between there that I missed. I'm sorry.
No, the, the, those were the two main issues. The, the condition 53, uh, which, which was requiring the applicant to apply for and obtain that the special use permit. Condition 27 from the previous permit, uh, that's the one that required abandonment of the facilities by, by a date certain. That has not occurred. And then the other issue I, I touched on between those was, was the, the joint SEQA and NEPA process with overlapping agencies.
I need to read your phone. It's better, it's better for us to have it written, it's better for me to have it written so I could go back to it. All right. Commissioner?
Jeff, just, just for clarification purposes, most of what you've represented this afternoon, and it is already afternoon, is coming from you personally or as the forestry watch position that you have?
This is as executive director of Los Padres Forest Watch and also on behalf of the Center for Biological Diversity, who we submitted a, a joint letter with, through the, the planning director-
I'm sorry, can you repeat the, the second one?
The Center for Biological Diversity.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have a speaker card for Charlotte Schmidt, but I understand she left?
Yes, she has to leave.
Okay. Are there any other speakers that wish to speak, supporting the appeal? Seeing none, what do we, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question of staff right now.
Question of staff before we go on to rebuttal?
His failure to receive notice, so is he on a list to receive notice of this proceeding? Or the institution he represents?
There, there's a difference between, you know, being on a list saying, notifying the county, moving forward, I want to be notified of any action that happens on this, the interested parties list.
I guess I want to know if we had an obligation to notify him, and did we in fact do it?
I don't believe that we had a legal obligation to do it, but I do believe that it was important for us to notify people. And I'm just looking at the, what happens is when you go to a hearing, you go to a public hearing, and there's a sign-in list. And it's our, it's our policies to notify everybody from the sign-in list that the, of the action of that hearing that happened. As I understand it, Mr. Kuiper wasn't at that hearing, but someone from the Center for Biological Diversity's was, and that person was notified. And as I understood him to say, there was a dual letter signed. So that's, I'm just looking over quickly, the, the list of people that were, that were, that signed into that meeting. So that is the email list that then is generated back of the decision. You came to the meeting, and here is your email address, and now we're going to notify you of what's happened at that meeting.
Okay. And a, and a follow-up from Mr. Baca. Does the fact that Coningstein Road crosses Forest Service land and whether, are we requiring that they have a special use permit from Forest Service to show legal access? How is the access across that, Forest Service determined? How is the access across that Forest Service determined? Or was it?
Thank you, paper being thrown at me. Madam Chair, Commissioner Anstott, we did receive a public comment like that the access road is in part a Forest Service road. Coneystein Road doesn't cross the Forest Service, it ends before that point. And then the road leading to the Nesbit site crosses the Ratcliffe property, then it crosses Forest Service land, and then it reaches the Nesbit property. And it is correct. You need to have a special use permit to use that road. However, Marada Petroleum operates federal leases on that very property that the road crosses, and so they have, they're already trucking from the federal lease and trucking down Coneystein Road from the federal lease. That lease operates without any land use regulatory authority from the county, and --
So you were satisfied they had access in Egress over the federal lands?
No, Mr. Kuiper's comment is correct, is that the fine nuance is, is they have access along that federal road to access the federal lease. Immediately adjacent to the federal lease is the Nesbit lease. And technically speaking, they don't have access to truck oil from the Nesbit lease across that same road that they're trucking from the adjacent property on that same road. So we have communication from the Forest Service that they're processing an application right now for a special use permit, and have informed us that Marada Petroleum is authorized to continue using the road while that application is being processed.
Thank you.
So that's from the Forest Service.
Thank you.
Following up, I've got a speaker -- a statement card here from Marion Ratcliffe that states that she also was not notified. That's what the card says. Was she on the list to be notified?
I can clarify something also to the notice issue.
Just a moment.
We're checking.
Oh, go ahead then, it'll take a minute. Come on up.
Just to clarify, yes, we did not attend the Planning Director hearing, but we did submit written comments in advance of that hearing. Those comments were, it was a joint comment letter signed by both Los Padres Forest Watch, my organization, and the Center for Biological Diversity. Prior to that, we send an email to county staff saying, hey, we are interested in this project, please place us on the public notice list, so that we receive notices of public hearings, environmental documents, and decisions made. By virtue of either one of those, and especially because of both of those actions we took, we should have received notice of the Planning Director's decision for the very purpose of giving us notice and an opportunity to appeal the project should we have decided to go on that route. We didn't receive any notice. We weren't included in the email that the county sent out notifying everybody about the decision until well after the 10-day appeal period, and neither did the Center for Biological Diversity. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Madam Chair, on the question of Marion Ratcliffe, she received an email on June 9, 2016 about notifying her that the appeal hearing of today is 8:30 today.
Thank you. Now, we will hear from the applicant again with a rebuttal.
And I will attempt to be --
Don't talk unless you're talking into this thing.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'll attempt to be brief. I have some notes here of some comments that were made, and I think it's important they be clarified. With due respect to Mr. Baca and to Mr. Kuiper, actually, they're both not right around the federal. This road is a road that in the federal archives existed in 1880 when the original homesteads were generated, which are the predecessors in interest to Nesbit and Ratcliffe. I litigated this one. I have all the original federal archives. This road predated the U.S. Forest Service, and we have the original survey notes. And the law, actually, under federal law, is quite clear. It's a federal, it's a public road under RS 2477, and everybody and anybody can use it. And I will tell you right now, for example, the Raincliff-Ratcliffe folk have some certain gates on it, and if someone were to fight that issue, those would have to be removed. So in fact, we view there to be no requirement for any kind of permit. And I would remind you that these wells were drilled back in the '70s, and the feds have known about it, and there isn't any secret about any of this. And what unfolded is that in this process, Mr. Kuiper communicated to the Fed folks that manage this particular tongue of property that comes between the Nesbit and the Ratcliffe property, and raised this issue. And they said, no, no, you don't need a use permit, but why don't you go ahead and apply? And it's ministerial, and it's been there for 100 and something years, and it isn't going to be an issue, and in the meanwhile, we have no problems. And we said, okay, we'll do the application if that's your request. Would you please communicate whatever your position is to county staff so that they know what's going on? And Mr. Baca received that communication as he read it to you. So we're doing what the federal government wants, but I would tell you that if there were to be push come to shove, it's a public road as a matter of law. The next thing I would raise for you is around this issue of pipeline. And I think Mr. Baca directed his comments to you quite accurately on that, but I would comment as follows. The oil produced that we're talking about is about three and a half to four barrels a day. So we're talking about a pipeline, as he described it, from a plateau down a cliff into another property. My client doesn't own the Nesbit Fee Simple, just the mineral rights, let's see, my client does not own the Hearth Fee Simple property. So just focusing on the concept for a moment, before my client could run a pipeline onto the Hearth property to bring some other lease oil onto it, as opposed to drilling on Hearth, my client would have to go to the Fee Simple landowners and try and obtain permission to do that, because a mineral rights lease says you have the right to explore the mineral rights on this property. You don't have the right to bring something else onto it. So my client would have to go to the Hearth Fee Simple owners and try and obtain that permission. And then if it were permitted, I'm positive that the first thing Mr. Baca would say to me is, okay, now you need to modify the Hearth CUP, because you're bringing a pipeline onto it, and you're bringing oil onto it from some other location. And by the way, what's the offload location, and how does all of that happen? So it is neither economically feasible or practical around this. And as Mr. Baca described, to build a pipeline over a cliff and down and make sure you don't have breaks, and pipe is not of unlimited length and the like, would be a very significant economic and construction project. The issue that I heard about how do we know about the number of truck trips? You may recall, and you know this certainly from other conversations, every oil well has to post on Dogger on a monthly basis exactly the production. It's a regulation, it's required. These wells are no different. Mr. Baca has looked through all of the well records back, and that's why he says with confidence that we're fantasizing about one truck trip a week. It's really going to be one every other week. But that's absolutely posted public available information. Well, it's not hard to calculate what that converts into truck trips. You're not going to run a truck empty. That's why there are tanks there. It's not economic. So it's very easy to track compliance in terms of truck trips. And the last comment I would have really is what, at least to me, I perceive to be a sort of a pretty frontal attack on your staff. It is no easy job for applicants to move through the process. I mean, I appreciate county staff's work. They work hard, they work diligent. But, you know, these things take years, and there's a lot of work that goes into it. And I think if you were to ask Mr. Baca, is it always just so easy? The answer is no. They impose a lot of requirements on applicants, and it costs a lot of money and takes a lot of time. And the county staff is quite rigorous in terms of their requirements, and I can't speak to what happened before my time involving this matter, but I can tell you that since I've been involved, that Mr. Baca and his staff have been crossing every T and dotting every I, sometime at least, sometimes at least to us in kind of a maddening way. But that's what they do. And I will tell you, separate from this project at all, because I represent a number of folks with CUPs, and I don't know when Ms. Pearlheart implemented it, but there is a cycle that goes on, because my clients get the letters and the visitations, where CUPs are revisited periodically, and folks come out and look at things and review conditions and compliance. And I know my clients are doing that. I don't know when that was implemented by staff, but it happens. And they actually make you pay for it, and it's in the CUP stuff that that kind of thing is going on. So there is a process that includes that kind of regular and periodic review. In terms of this CUP, and these are my final comments, Mr. Baca read to you the language that my client has agreed to, that is, the project description, which is one, a maximum, not an average, a maximum of one tanker-truck trip per week. That's it. And that's clear as a bell in the CUP. That's the condition that my client applied for. That's the condition that's imposed, and that doesn't change without coming back to you. Concerning the maps and the other maps and stuff that I wasn't involved in, I'm looking at the May 19, 2016 Planning Director letter to my client. And I don't know what Ms. Holly's looking at or addressing, but attached to it is a GPS map of the three Nesbit wells. It identifies in this CUP Nesbit 1, 2, and 4. Three had been built long ago, drilled before my client ever was involved in, abandoned. And the way Dogger does it is they keep track of them sequentially with the GPS coordinates. And so at least as I understand what your staff has done, is they've said to my client, these are the three wells, these are the GPS coordinances, you can't move a well from its GPS coordinates. So we understand what Ms. Pearlheart and Mr. Baca have done. It's quite proper and accurate and okay with us. We're not talking about anything else in the world. Here's the map, here are the three listed wells, here are the numbers under Dogger record, here are the three GPS coordinates. So we don't understand the confusion around it, because we think it's absolutely crystal clear. So we appreciate your time and your consideration and respectfully request your support in this matter.
Just a moment. Any questions to the speaker? I do have one. Mr. Kuiper requested that we omit a section from Condition 53 regarding "other written authorization," given that you say you don't need any anyway. Do you have any objection to omitting that?
Yes, that's precisely the letter that the Forest Service has written to Mr. Baca. That's exactly the issue, that our legal view is no permission is necessary. They've said, well, would you just please process this ministerial application? Their backup, it's the federal government, is two to three years. It's a ministerial processing that they're telling us just to move the paperwork from California to Washington and back somehow manages to take three years, two to three years. So they made their administrative analysis, and they said to Mr. Baca in writing, while it's being processed, full authorization to use the road. If you adopt what Mr. Kuiper wants, that Mr. Baca, I think, would then say to us, well, even though I have the federal district head guy's authorization by letter, you can't do it. And so that's the import of that change of language. So we would request that you not delete that language, because it's there because of precisely this issue.
Understood. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure procedurally, does Sea Frog, as the appellant, have right of rebuttal as well?
No.
Okay. Because this is a de novo hearing. So now we have closing comments by staff, and then I'll close the public hearing after closing comments by staff.
I have a question of staff first.
You have a question, Sam? Go ahead.
Being a resident in the area and remembering as a boy going up to get bottled water just below the intersection of Coneystein Road and 150 in the old days, I know that that bridge over the creek there was improved at some point in time, rather significantly. And I'm wondering if it was improved after the Board of Supervisors, in whatever situation found it to be unsafe for any reason. Because I know there was a significant improvement. And it's important, because health and safety is one of their primary causes. And I'm wondering, does anyone know when that bridge was improved as it related? We're talking about, what was it, a 1983 Board of Supervisors permit? But I wouldn't be surprised if it was improved after that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Anstott, you're verging into Stump the Chump land. I do know, based upon the record, that there were some improvements of Coneystein Road immediately adjacent to the bridge, because there was a narrow spot there that even in the old EIR, the original 1903 EIR, said there's a narrow spot, and two trucks can't pass each other, but that's a matter of inconvenience and not a substantial safety hazard. So the original EIR recognized there were some limitations of Coneystein Road and found them to be inconvenient, not a safety hazard. Now, testimony we've had in the record is that the county came in later and widened the road there and took property from one of the people who have testified, you know, in these hearings, that they came in and they took part of their property to widen the road. So there have been road improvements there. The bridge, and this is in the documentary record, I can search for it, but the bridge meets Ashto standards, that's American Association.
I understand that.
And it also has been examined for its structural stability, and we have a memo on that, that it has the highest Caltrans rating and is perfectly fine for these type of trucks.
Thank you, sir.
I have three outstanding questions, little question marks that I don't have checkmarks next to. Can I go ahead and do those prior to closing remarks? Okay. Who's responsible for spills if they should occur?
Well, the responsible party would be the person owning the oil, and so that would be the applicant if a spill were to occur at the oil site. In the pipeline case, where you have an oil operator who transmits pipeline through a lact meter into a common carrier, as soon as it goes through the meter is the common carrier's responsibility to, like the recent Crimson event, that was actually oil owned by Crimson, because it had passed through a transfer meter. But in a trucking case, I'm not sure, I think if you have an oil spill, once the material's in a truck, I think it's the responsibility of the trucking company to not spill the oil once it's been transferred to them. So a spill on the site would be the applicant's problem. Now, in terms of who responds, there's a whole series of agencies that respond, you know, Fire Department, Office of Emergency Services, state OES gets involved, and there's a whole series of reporting and procedures to address oil spills.
I think the concern was that somehow it would be on the public's dime. The next question I have that's not answered yet is, why was this application accepted if they didn't go ahead and abandon the facilities that they were conditioned to do back in 2013?
Well, as a general rule, and getting back to anyone can ask for anything under the Constitution, we don't have Constitution, we don't have the ability to deny processing of an application. And of course, and even in-
I'm sorry, I misstated it. It was that they were in violation of their permit condition.
Okay, well, I can answer that too.
Okay.
There is a section of our code that says we're not going to process an application if you're in violation, except in the circumstance where the permit you're requesting would abate the violation, which is precisely the case here, that they're abating the violation.
Okay. And then the last one is, am I correct in understanding when Mr. Thomas was here, that he said that the threshold may have been triggered back in 2013 if you counted that project and this project?
Well, Mr. Thomas misspoke for a second there. The, I think that's a difference between the gross emissions and that we would estimate from the number of wells in the context of your question and what would be counted toward the thresholds of significance. The threshold of significance is five pounds per day. If you take the nine wells on the hearth lease, those nine times two pounds per day per well would cause 18 pounds per day of ROC. That's not a significant impact under County General Plan Policy, the adopted ISAGs, and the Air Quality Assessment Guidelines. And of course, the concept of the question, I think, was if we combined the hearth and Nesbit with the AGNU, would that be a significant impact? Not just the hearth and Nesbit, which are already connected. The project from an air quality standpoint was exactly the same with or without the Nesbit lease because it would involve nine new wells and maintaining existing facilities, which wouldn't have had a new impact. So the impact for the hearth Nesbit LU11041 permit would have been the same regardless of the situation. If you combined the AGNU with the hearth and Nesbit, you would have had three wells added to nine wells, so it would make 12 wells. That would be 24 pounds per day of ROC emissions. That still would not have been a significant impact under SEQA. However, that, those emissions would likely have triggered the offset requirements that would come with the APCD permits where they would be required an offset. And in fact, the applicant holds emission reduction credits for the hearth lease. He holds several tons per year of emission reduction credits that he purchased through the various ways that it's available. So he's already prepared, if he drills those wells, to meet his obligation to reduce air quality emissions.
Okay. And the last thing had to do with cumulative impacts. You've already touched on this once. Could you explain again how cumulative impacts have been analyzed?
Okay, the, by their nature, the air quality thresholds are all cumulative. The air is all together. In terms of traffic, we analyze the effect of the traffic that is proposed from this project. And I'll go back to the SEQA baseline question. The baseline is the physical conditions at the site at the time the NOP was put out for public review. And those physical conditions include the level of disturbance at the site on the ground, the equipment that's sitting there, and zero truck trips and zero emissions. And that's because the existing setting included the imposition of Condition 27 by your commission in 2013. So the project was analyzed to see first, were there any impacts on biological resources? Well, there's no new disturbance. The site is what it is and it's not proposed to change. And then we got to trucking. Well, that's, there's an issue of you have a number of truck trips and the emissions, therefore, from truck trips. Also, the reactivation of the wells, that would have new emissions. Those are evaluated in accordance with General Plan Policy and the adopted Air Quality Assessment Guidelines and found to be less than significant. So in terms of cumulative impacts, the main one is, of course, truck transportation of oil. And we evaluated and disclosed in the EIR both the Marata AGNU and Marata Nesbit truck trips. We also have in Appendix D, a complete historical record of the truck trips for all operators that use Konigstein Road from 1977 to 2014, so a 38-year record. I'll point out that while Mr. Davis may have relied on the thought that Marata AGNU could not use Konigstein Road to truck, there are other oil operators there who operate under adequate permits. And of course, there's the federal lease that Marata also operates, and they're allowed to truck as much as they wish, and there's no restriction on them using the public road. So regardless of what happens with the AGNU project, which has been approved, or this project, there will still be oil trucking on Konigstein Road because there's other facilities that have permission that is perfected and beyond appeal. I hope that-
So closing comments by staff if there are more?
Okay, I have more. The concept of a local pipeline connecting the hearth lease to the Nesbit lease, that really just shifts the trucking from one location to another. It's not really actually a pipeline use and transport of the oil. It just shifts the same trucking from one place to another. There was a comment that traffic has increased in the area. Well, not according to Caltrans. The traffic in 1983 was 2,900 average daily trips on the highway. It's still 2,900 as of 2014. So the, whatever growth control efforts have been made in that area, they have worked, and there is not an increased traffic from the 1983 conditions that were originally analyzed in the original EIR. The, there was a comment about the Santa Clara wastewater situation and the explosion and that somehow materials from this facility went there. Well, I'm not quite sure how to respond to that, other than the applicant has indicated that their oil is dropped off at a Crimson Pipeline Facility in Santa Paula and their wastewater goes to Antera. So as best I know, they had no connection with the Santa Clara facility. We've already discussed the Los Padres Forest Watch issue of the U.S. Forest Service land that's being used. They'll continue to truck. They have permission to truck from the federal leases right now on that very same road. So they will be trucking across that road, whether it's just the federal lease or the federal and Nesbit lease. We have received written information from the Forest Service Supervisor that they're allowed to use the road while the permit application is being processed. And one thing, there was a comment that was in some other materials, that why didn't we impose the condition that's on the AGNU project, that if they, if oil production gets to 350 barrels a day, then you must use a pipeline, which was the original condition from 1983? Well, that's kind of pointless because they're limited to one truck a maximum every week. And the math works out at 150-barrel capacity of the truck is that the maximum production they could ever get is 21 barrels a day. And so they can't, under this permit, ever reach anything close to the 350 barrels of oil per day that is a condition of the other permit. So it's just, it's a condition that wouldn't have any physical effect. So I think Ms. Pearlheart may have some additional comments.
Thank you. Mr. Baca, I only want to respond generally to a few things that I've heard today. One of them was Margot Griswold really saying that the planning staff should really take this serious, right? And I have at least 15 inches of paper on this responding to every point. 500 comments, including a 54-page response to comment letter that we just gave your planning commission. I cannot imagine our staff not taking anything more serious. This is as serious as it gets, a comment-for-comment response on each and every point that we've been given on essentially, you know, the existing oil and gas wells that are there. This is an extensive bit of information. It's an exhaustive amount of staff work, and it's also an exhaustive amount of work for SeaFrog. And I do appreciate them bringing it forward. As you can hear, they've brought things to our attention. We have raised the bar on our program over the last eight years, in good part to the work that SeaFrog is doing. That doesn't mean that we're going to agree with every comment that they submit here. So I knew the fact of asking for a new video was going to be a double-edged sword for me. So for me, we had testimony from the, from Caltrans that we have, from our Transportation Director, from our transportation staff, and from an independent transportation engineer that does work in the county all day long, that this is this intersection of Konigstein and 150 and the way that the road operates is acceptable. And we knew that going in. We had the same testimony, but there was concern about the truck going over. So, you know, there was testimony today that we wisely didn't show another video and that we staged a video. It was just a video to really prove to me, to have some comfort level to me and to, I know Commissioner Rodriguez was concerned and a couple of board members concerned. The turn can be done, right? So it wasn't, it wasn't anything other than that, just to show that. So we didn't remove a video, add a video. We just wanted to see that it could be done and that was the only purpose for that. And it's an awful lot of attention to pay at one intersection. And I can see, you know, the importance of it. There's going to be a signage plan. Caltrans is going to be involved. But, you know, this same intersection and hundreds of intersections in the county has to work for not just oil trucks, but septic trucks. And if you want your driveway paved, it has to work for cement trucks. It has to work for moving vans if you're going to move. We can't just so narrowly focus in on the articulation of one particular truck at one particular intersection in the county, or all development would grind to a halt if we did this exhaustive amount of research on every intersection. So I, I mean, I wanted to make that point to say that I see the letter John Davis said. I see the things that he said about the department. And I can say as somebody that's run this department for the last eight years, those things are simply untrue. We don't have a tawdry reputation. We don't have a lot of the things he said. I can see it from somebody's perspective that we're not looking carefully enough at that, but I can say from the staff time that was put into this and the thorough and thoughtful analysis that, from my perspective, that's simply not true. So that's all I had to say in closing.
Okay, so now I will close the public hearing and hear deliberations and a motion.
Make a comment?
Yes, comments.
Staff has put a tremendous amount of work into this, absolutely. And I realize the difficulty that they're under. I think we have outstanding product in front of us. While I haven't been here as long as everyone else on the panel, I have been on this commission, preceding Commissioner Pearlheart's appointment as Director for a short period of time. And that's certainly long enough to see the product, to compare the product, the best product we were getting then with the product we're getting today. And kudos to you and your staff for your training and taking advantage of the computerization technology and GPS and listening to the comments from the podium as it relates to notification and the efforts to make that notification to anybody that has expressed an interest. Just looking at the PowerPoint presentation on the notifications that were done in this particular case, the avenues that were used to get the word out. I think we get a great product from staff. I've got a couple of concerns. Most of my questions, I think, were answered. Bear with me for just a second. I've got, I've got a concern, obviously, about the past CUP violations as it relates to Konigstein Road. I understand that the applicant assumed the leases there and did not initiate trafficking, transporting on Konigstein initially. I assume that, and I'm just a layperson here, but I'm assuming that when one assumes a CUP, part of the due diligence in that assumption is to know and understand the parameters of that CUP and certainly not using Konigstein Road because it wasn't permitted. Certainly would have been there. And I, now, I don't know if, whatever memorandum or correspondence occurred between that, the previous applicant in planning, basically notifying of the need to use Konigstein. Obviously, it was transmitted, in my opinion. I'm not sure why that didn't trigger some action to modify that existing CUP in front of whatever the commission was at that time, certainly not this commission, so that when our applicant today assumed the CUP would have been with the appropriate conditions and modifications to allow, lawfully allow the traffic to occur on Konigstein Road. And again, I don't know at this point what the due diligence was of the current applicant as he assumed that CUP. That traffic intersection is problematic. It will always be problematic as long as there is traffic, truck traffic, commercial truck traffic coming and going, particularly towing a trailer up or down that hill. I think, I still have concerns about it. I think it's incumbent upon the transportation company to use every exercise, exercise all their ability to make it safely. I think they would do that. But in my own mind, I don't think they can properly get into, onto Konigstein Road without violating the traffic on the exiting vehicles that might be there or that might be coming down the hill. That said, a turn can theoretically still be done safely as long as there's precautions made. And I think what the Board of Supervisors recently did as it relates to that particular intersection, I think, I think is about all we can do. Certainly, now it's all about Caltrans approving or not approving and some additional signage. And so my comments or any effort, comments I might have on something beyond that is pretty moot at this point. Short of SeaFrog, you know, choosing to, an ability to mount a remote camera to monitor that intersection in the world of cell service and Wi-Fi cameras, it might be a doable thing to monitor, but that's not, that's not something I'm putting forward. It's just a thought I've got in my mind. Just to confirm in my mind, if this CUP is approved, it goes through 2038 and not from when it was applied for and when the application was originally made? Is that right? What's the length of the CUP? I guess what I'm saying is the 25 years?
Chair Dukas, Commissioner Rodriguez, the CUP that, remember, you're looking at a modification of an existing CUP. The date that we showed you is the expiration date on the existing CUP and it's not proposed to change. So that would be 22 years from now. So that's, that's when that, which is, of course, 25 years from when you granted it.
Okay. And as part of protocol for planning, is there any sort of administrative review of the CUP absent complaints or concerns about residents or third parties?
Chair Dukas, Commissioner Rodriguez, yes, there is a condition in the permit requiring the applicant to submit condition compliance review, deposit, and the review is done every three years. And also, although it's not, whenever there's a new well or they want to drill a new well, which is not the request today, through the zoning clearance application process with the oil and gas permits, a complete review of the file is done.
Okay. Thank you. Ultimately, it's, it's a- Ultimately, it's, if there's a problem unless it's brought to planning's attention by a neighbor or a third party, we would have, we as a county would have no way of knowing if anything might be occurring outside the permit. Is that a safe assumption?
Commissioner Rodriguez, I would say that that's a safe assumption, the same as the other thousands of permits in the county. When you enter into a condition use permit or a plan development permit, it's a contract with the county. You're saying you're agreeing to abide by these 59 conditions or 85 conditions whether or not we're, have eyes on you every day, every week, once a month, or once every three years. You're supposed to comply with your conditions regardless of whether we're watching you or not. But what the code says is that we can, not, less than once every three years, come out and do a compliance review. And as you know, over the last eight years, we've really been ramping up that program. And so that condition and that ability to have the applicant pay for that review happens on a daily basis here now. So that those reviews are happening and I think that that is really cutting down on any compliance. But, you know, the end of it is you have a permit that you want to keep, right? And if you're violating your permit, that the county can revoke your permit. So I can come and ask you to revoke that permit. You can ask to have that permit revoked, or a neighbor can ask for that permit revoked. So having a contract or a condition use permit is a very valuable land use, right? And you would want to really keep that in good stead. And I think that's, for the most part, why we don't have a large violations associated with condition use permits, because people really want to keep them as opposed to, we have lots of violations just of the zoning ordinance that is outside of our department and is handled by code compliance. But that's a much bigger deal because there's not a really carrot at the end of that to have to comply with.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rodriguez, I just want to add to that and to what Ms. Pogero just said. When someone comes in for a zoning clearance now for an oil well, we not only review the entirety of the file to make sure what they're asking for is authorized, we also do a compliance review on the site because we're not to grant zoning clearances for a site that's in violation. In this particular case, they have the permission or the authority now to drill nine new wells on the Hearth lease. When they come in for one of those wells, we're going to do a compliance review on the entirety of CUP LU 110041 as may be modified by your commission today. So we'd be looking at the whole thing each time they come in for a well. So that's another point of compliance check. And that, of course, gives them some real incentive to be in compliance because they can't drill a well if they're not.
How many of those nine wells that are authorized on that lease are active?
There's actually two existing wells on the Hearth drilling pad and they have authority to drill nine more.
Correct.
They have not drilled any of those nine.
Okay.
There's two existing wells on the Hearth pad.
Right. So you're saying they would have to come back to planning to break ground on those other wells?
That is correct. In fact, Dogger will not issue them a permit to drill a well without a zoning clearance from the county. And our zoning clearance process, induced by our experience on Esper 5, is we're very thorough before we grant those.
Thank you.
Any other comments by commissioners or a motion?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I just would like to say something personally. I'm relatively new to this process and I'm still learning as I go. And I really want to thank the people from Sea Frog for coming out. I thought what you put together as an appeal was very comprehensive and I learned a lot from it. I think you're effective in what you do and I appreciate that. I also want to thank staff. I think you did an outstanding job of addressing every issue and giving us a lot of information to help us make decisions. And the applicant, thank you for the time you have spent today coming here and explaining and sharing with us what you are planning to do and how things will move forward. I truly appreciate that. And I wanted to make that comment, being a newer planning commissioner. Thank you.
Yes. I wanted to echo Director Pearlheart's comments that that road has been used for more than tanker truck traffic. And considering that there is no evidence that there have been accidents or issues for any reason at that site, at this time, we have no, we have no reason, no evidence to consider it unsafe. So anyway, if there are no other comments, I would move that we grant the modified CUP.
Second.
So.
You're following staff recommendation?
Following staff recommendation.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion by Commissioner Anstott?
No matter.
I do have one comment to make and that is I echo my commissioners, my colleagues, Rodriguez and Kestley regarding appreciation for first staff for explaining it like I'm five and being able to, this really is a complicated process. And also, I want to call out Mr. Thomas for coming and spending all morning long with us and making it clear again how our system works. So I did want to express my appreciation to everyone. What I heard was a neighborhood, residents of a neighborhood who feel ill-used by this process. And I think that it's understandable if you don't know all the different, you know, the jargon, the procedures, what the limits of our job is up here, that it might, it might make you feel that you are not being taken seriously and that you have no chance. I do think that as a result of your participation in the county process, we've tightened things up and that's demonstratable. I looked at this with, you know, very, very thoroughly. And I also want to thank our clerk for getting us all the information in a timely manner. And it just, it comes fast and furious and she gets it to us as fast as we can, as fast as she can, so that we have adequate time to review it and really give it its due. So there are hours and hours and hours spent reviewing this stuff and we prepare before we come here. So thank you to my colleagues as well for agreeing to do this job. With that being said, I looked at the arguments that were put forward and I've asked for clarification and I am well satisfied that we can follow the staff recommendations. I know that people will disagree with that and that makes sense to me also because people come from different points of view with different values and things that are important to them versus things that are important to other people. There's a process that goes on in my mind with, that's what I have to pay attention to. And then there's this process of, that's not, that's not for me to consider, that's not for me to consider. It just makes the issues a lot cleaner. And so for me, the most important thing as a planning commissioner is that we follow our own zoning ordinances and our own procedures at the county, that we comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, that every law, we take an oath before we can sit up here that we follow these rules and regulations, that we follow the law. And we take this, or I think I speak for everyone, we take this extremely seriously. So I want to say thank you to everyone involved and also I will support the motion.
Okay, moving on. Now it's time, you can clear the room while we continue on our meeting. Thank you very much. Discussion, report by the planning director on board actions and other matters. Oh. Oh, we have to decide it? Just a moment, please. Do we, I think I mentioned that case PL 150150 was continued to a date uncertain. I think I, I think I, yeah. I did, I did, I do have exhibits also that I don't know that were named in the Marada. We have those. Okay. So, report by the planning director.
Thank you very much, Chair Dukas. I'm reviewing your schedule right now and so I don't have you booked again until October 13th. I'm sure that won't last, so trying not to get too excited. That meeting that we pulled off the agenda earlier this week, hopefully we'll settle out the issues with that and we'll be back here at a time that we can ensure that all five of you are there. So hopefully in another few weeks, we can put that one back on. So your agenda is looking pretty light except the October 13th. That's going to be a very big and long hearing. So we're going to talk to you about our local coastal plan update and those things that are on there is ESHA. It stands for environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And we'll be talking a lot about that, especially in the Santa Monica Mountains, what constitutes that and then when you, when you do have environmentally sensitive habitat, how do you develop in that zone? So there'll be some new regulations that we'll be putting forward. We're still developing those right now. We'll be out in the community talking about them before we come here in October. But we'll also be talking about having a wireless ordinance similar to the one that we have adopted recently, your board, your commission and then the board for the wireless communication facilities in the non-coastal zone. A lot of that good work is being put into the coastal zone and then also a coastal trail, the California Coastal Trail will be discussed as well. So that will be a full day and I think that's the only thing that we'll be putting on your agenda that day. That item will be going forward with your recommendations or amendments to the board and it's already been scheduled for December the 6th, 2016. Let's see, the board, oh, the board also has an appeal on October the 4th of a de novo hearing. So it's a, another appeal of your planning commission's approval for a wireless communication facility at Rincon Point. So you heard that facility several weeks ago that has been appealed to the board of supervisors. And so that's all I have on that. Let me just go through really quick. Nope, I have your attendance. That's all I have unless you have something for me.
Are there any items that the planning commission wishes to discuss, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, I do. There's a lot of, I guess, activity going on as it relates to short-term rentals and ordinances, both within the county and other municipalities. I'm starting to get personally questioned about zoning, zoning ordinances as close and short-term rentals. And I see that there is a public, public meeting on August 9th, I believe, here in the evening as it relates to the general plan. And I expect, I am assuming, there will be people here that might have that, those types of comments to put before the consultants. But as I said, I've gotten a variety of questions relates to short-term rentals, zoning the R1, RB1, and zoning violations, residential versus commercial, and what the threshold is and what the tipping point is. And I was hoping to, maybe I could forward them to you, Director Pearlheart, to, forward to county council to have a look at and if it's possible to get a response back, I would certainly appreciate that. If not, at least make you aware of it because it will come up, obviously, whether it's in the ordinance, if the board goes forward with an ordinance or as part of the general plan consideration, in my opinion. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez. Anna, could you look up when that's scheduled before the, before the board? There is a study session on that item before the board. Chris Stevens is, is working on that. There's an issue paper on our website right now, which I can have Anna forward on to you. There's also a board letter prepared. So the board has asked Chris Stevens, the agency director, to take a look at that issue. And Mr. Stevens has been working with quite a large group of, you know, gathering information that he's going to present to the board. Is it?
August 2nd.
August 2nd. So it's coming, it's coming right up. And so at that point, then we'll receive the board's direction on what, if any, they would like us to do. And so if there's some land use component to it, clearly, and we would need to amend the ordinance to deal with whatever the board desires, then we would be back before your planning commission. So we're all kind of waiting until that August 2nd hearing to see what the, what the board is considering. But if you have any items that you want to or let people in your neighborhood know that this item is going to happen, so if they have an opinion on short-term rentals in the unincorporated area, that would be a good time to go to the board and let their feelings and thoughts be known.
Okay, thank you. I certainly appreciate Anna forwarding any documentation to me that's, you know, on point, as you referenced. And I'll pass that information on to, as it relates to the meeting coming up, to anybody that's interested. I have a personal interest, obviously. I live in unincorporated beach area and I'm impacted by, by short-term rentals, you know. When I used to work in law enforcement, we had problems with particular areas as it relates to a nuisance, and I won't get into the description of nuisances, but we, there was so much traffic, sometimes we refer to them as a jack-in-the-box, just popping in, popping out, popping in, popping out. And so there's the issue of, you know, rentals, short-term rentals, long-term rentals, you know, that type of thing. Certainly I've got an interest. Thank you.
Commissioner Kestley, did you have something?
Yes, I did. But in this, for the sake of time and getting us out for lunch, I'm going to ask that maybe we do this another time. However, due to a personal experience and after having some conversation with Kim, it was brought to my attention that I might want to request that we have some sort of a film production permit process education session because I was recently impacted by a film crew who did not pull permits and created quite a nuisance in the unincorporated area that I live in. And I'd like to kind of understand that process and the remedies that residents have when a permit's been violated or not even applied for.
I understand that a former commissioner is involved with that, too. Commissioner Bartels, Bill Bartels mentioned at Wesner's, Commissioner Wesner's retirement that he was working on that and he said that he would just like to know what the rules are. So that was, that sounds really helpful.
Sure, yeah. And I would be happy to bring that back in a, in a, in a study session or just a program so we could show you what the film permit program is about. I would say in a, in a quick nutshell, I looked very quickly because I know when Commissioner Kestley called me, I thought, huh, that's a pretty unusual violation to film without a film permit because if you want good standing in the county and the film industry is pretty close, right? You just wouldn't do something like that. And so I took a look. We issue a lot of film permits, so I took a look at a five-year record. We've issued close to 2,000 film permits in the last five years and we've issued five notices of violation for issuing without, and that includes the one that we issued there to that film production company, issuing a notice of violation for filming without a film permit. So it is a relatively small thing that happens, but when it happens, it really impacts the neighbors, right? And so, and then there were some other questions, I think, that Commissioner Kestley had about the ministerial process and filming even till 10 o'clock at night, and is that right? And then the process of waivers, you know, you don't have to receive waivers until you're doing something that rises to the level. You're going to be too noisy, you're going to be too late, you're going to be creating some issues, you're going to be working with animals, those kind of things. And that requires a waiver, but it requires only 50% plus one of your neighbors. And so, of course, they're And so, of course, they're not going to come to the neighbors that maybe would have, be impacted the most. And so there was a discussion on, you know, whether that was appropriate or not. So what we can do is we can agendize it, we can come with our film permit program, who's, you know, they've got a great reputation, very successful, Thomas back here runs that program, and we can give you an overview of what it is and how it works, and if there's, you know, some questions after that, then we can address those.
Okay. Is there anything else? I was wondering if Mr. Barnes could talk about the, I know that you sent an email to me, but I don't know that anyone else is aware of something that got litigated. Do you want to?
Oh, right, yeah, thanks for reminding me. Yeah, the, the county got a good result in the, I don't know if you remember, and some of you weren't even on the commission, Hauser versus Board of Supervisors, it was the Tiger Project, we call it, in, in Malibu. And so the, your commission denied the project, it was, I think it was a 3-2 vote. It was appealed to the board. The board denied it, it was a 4-1 vote. And then the applicant sued the county alleging that, basically, the decision, the county's decision to deny the permit was arbitrary. And also, it alleged that the applicant's due process rights were violated because certain board members had ex parte communications with project opponents. But, yeah, so we got a good result, recently, the Superior Court denied the writ petition. And, yeah, so that was a good outcome. And it was a, it was a somewhat lengthy lawsuit, there was a little bit of discovery involved, which was somewhat irregular in a writ petition. But it was a good reminder, and you all are very good about avoiding ex parte communications because, and you actually see it in the news with the coastal commission, it's an issue. And basically, you know, my, my standing advice, and I guess I'm using this as just a reminder moment, is to avoid ex parte communications with anyone regarding projects that come before you, because even if it's not illegal, it creates a lot of headaches for, for me and for the county. So I'm glad that we prevailed and we, we didn't do anything wrong.
Is there any news on whether or not they're planning to appeal that decision?
No news yet.
How long do they have?
They'll have, they'll have 60 days after the judgment's entered, which hasn't happened yet. And so we, next time, I guess, we have a meeting, I might know.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that being it, this meeting is adjourned.